All right, we are live. Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, April fourteenth, 2020, 5:30 PM. We are on Zoom. We are not gathered at the Veterans Hall. With that, I will call out the council member names to make sure that we have a quorum. Councilmember Heller.
I'm here.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis.
I'm here.
Okay, Councilmember McPherson.
And I'm here also.
All right, and Councilmember Davis.
Yes, I am here as well.
Okay, thank you. With that, I want to just, in your own way, we'll take a moment of silence to remember those that have suffered from this COVID-19 pandemic, and just in your own way, thank and recognize those that have suffered. Thank you. Mr. Neermeyer, do we have a closed session report?
No closed session items to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, I will go to Mayor and Councilmembers' reports. Councilmember Davis, would you like to start it off?
Sure, thank you. I want to recognize tonight one of our special Morro Bay citizens, Alexa Ford, who is a student at Morro Bay High School. Alexa is very active in various social causes. She's president of the Students for Social Justice Club at the high school. She co-founded the March for Our Lives and organized a Town Hall for Our Lives public discussion with Congressman Salute Carbahal. And she was one of two special invitees from the Central Coast who attended the first ever Presidential Candidate Forum on Gun Safety in Las Vegas. Alexa is also active on climate protection. She organized activities during the Climate Action Week at the high school, and she's an active participant in community-wide climate action. Now, I feel as if young people like Alexa are the future hope of our country, and I am proud that Alexa is one of our great Morro Bay citizens, and I want to thank Alexa, and also want to thank Travis and Jen Ford for raising a beautiful and influential daughter. A report from SlowCog regarding RTA, "All county transit agencies and transportation providers are cleaning vehicle interiors frequently and asking riders to take personal responsibility by washing hands frequently, maintaining safe distances, and please do not use public transit if you are feeling ill." Morro Bay Transit is currently operating its normal schedule. There is no charge. You don't have to pay a fare, just hop on and hop off. We are monitoring the operations and will make necessary adjustments as conditions change. And that's all for me tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember McPherson.
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody to shelter in place, to practice social distancing, to abide by the regulations and the emergency ordinance, and to stay well and be safe. And if they have any concerns, they can reach me directly or any questions. I'd be happy to talk with any citizen. The number is 805-772-1452. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Councilmember Addis.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to City Manager Scott Collins and Councilmember Red Davis, as well as our Chamber CEO Erica Crawford. They've all joined me on our community call Fridays at four, and I'm having another community call this Friday at 4:00 PM. The community is invited. It's a Zoom call, so you might want to download the Zoom app, but the guests are going to be the principals of our local Morro Bay Public Schools. So I have Principal Janet Gould from Delmar Elementary School and Vice Principal Heather Contreras from Morro Bay High School, who can give us an update of what's happening with our public schools, how food is being provided, what are the other services that schools in the Morro Bay community can share with us. And then there's always time for question and answer. So you can check my Facebook, which is Dawn Addis City Council, is where the Zoom link is posted, or if you're on my email list, then I sent that out today. Or folks are welcome to email me at my city email, daddis@morobayca.gov, and I can send you the Zoom link. But we'd love to have the community engage. And it's just been a weekly update that is informal, open to questions, just to make sure that we're here together and people have the information they need during the Corona crisis. So thank you so much.
Great, and thank you. Councilmember Heller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In order to try and catch up with Councilmember Addis, I have just started a Facebook page, Jeff Heller, City Council. I must, for full disclosure, admit that I am not a social media person. This page is probably completely messed up, but I decided to take the plunge, so with some very understanding friends who have helped me put it together. It is now up and running. And, you know, at the risk of an overload of information for everybody, I set this up just to try and, hey, if you have a question about anything, I'll do the best I can to get back to you and respond to your question. Obviously, there are plenty of places to go, probably better information than what I'm going to have on my website, but it's up there in case you're interested. Please like me and follow me, whatever that means. Thank you very much. The other announcement is I've initiated a petition on change.org, which is a website where anybody can initiate a petition about anything and send it to just about anybody. So since I fall into that category, I initiated a petition about two and a half weeks ago and sent it to our elected officials in Sacramento as well as Washington. And the title of the petition is "Fix California's Pension Problem Once and For All." And as you know, one of the major financial challenges for our city and most California cities and many cities across the country is unfunded accrued pension liabilities. So this petition is intended to bring this to the forefront at the federal and state level and hope that the next phase financial relief from the federal government will address this issue and perhaps find a way to take this albatross off of our necks, which would be a great boon to assist us in our financial recovery for the city. Also, if you're not a Facebook person, or you don't really spend much time on the internet, that's fine. I do have a phone number, 805-471-1257. And I actually got this phone because I really thought I would be overwhelmed with calls from constituents with questions and inquiries and congratulatory messages, et cetera, which are accepted. I'd only get a few, couple of phone calls per month, so please, people, call me. I'm paying for this phone. I don't want to disconnect it, so please reach out, anything, anytime. I'm always happy to talk with you and meet with you. And lastly, I want to thank all the residents, if there are any of you out there, 1, 2, 20, I don't know how many people have tuned into this meeting. It is a little more challenging, but in a lot of ways, it's kind of interesting way to meet. And if you're not a Zoom person, I highly recommend House Party, which is like a way more fun version of this, and maybe the city should consider using it for future meetings. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're having way too much.
Well, it's my New Year's resolution.
I wanted to give the community just a quick update on the COVID-19 issue with regard to our counties. I've had the opportunity to participate three times per week on a county call with all elected officials, including state and federal that represent us. And we have information to share. As many of you may know, you read the newspapers, as of yesterday, actually, late today, we have 120 confirmed cases of COVID-19 through testing in San Luis Obispo County. Two days ago, there were 116. On March 13th, there were 33. It appears, and I just say it appears, as if the curve in San Luis Obispo County may be flattening. And I use those words very cautiously. Majority of positive cases are in the age group between 18 and 64. With regard to location, North County has 64 cases. South County has a total of 31 cases. Central County, 13 cases. And coastal regions, 12 cases. Morro Bay had six cases for the last week or so, and today we were identified a seventh case. So Morro Bay now has seven positive cases identified. The capacity for testing at the Public Health Department remains the same, 50 tests per day. There are a number of private labs that continue to test, and if you feel you have symptoms of COVID-19, similar to the flu, which are aches, pains, fever greater than 100.4, and/or sweats and fatigue, call your doctor or urgent care center before going in, and they will direct you to either appropriate testing or where to go to be screened for COVID-19. Interesting to look at the number of cases in surrounding counties. We're fortunate, as compared to Santa Barbara County, which just a week ago had about 230 cases. Just yesterday had 264 cases, and now Santa Barbara County has 284 cases. So we're seeing an increase in our neighboring county, Kern County. Just yesterday, 396 cases. A week ago, approximately 290 cases. And as of today, 446 cases. I say that not to bring alarm, but it brings into perspective one of the things that the county has done, and that is to open up or prepare to open up an alternative care center that will be utilized for COVID-19 patients. The first phase is at Cal Poly. And at present, they have a little over 190 beds that are ready to go. They plan to open on Thursday and will take non-severely ill COVID-19 patients as referred only from a hospital. So don't drive to Cal Poly if you think you have symptoms. Don't get evaluated there. That will be strictly for as they're referred from a hospital. That facility has been erected to protect the integrity of the availability of hospital beds, especially ICU beds and ventilators, for the most severely ill, should we have a surge that might occur in our county. I want to thank our city workers, especially our essential workers, police, fire, maintenance, public works, those folks that are on the front lines, water and sewer utilities, because they're continuing to work every day out in the field. We appreciate so greatly what you're doing. We know that you're exposed in a high-risk way to potential contamination or association with individuals that might have COVID-19, and we just want to thank you as a council for the work that you're doing. Additionally, I want to offer my thanks to our city staff, including Mr. Collins, Ms. Callaway, and all of the directors of the departments for their continued work and management of this severe pandemic and emergency issue. Remember, if you have needs, please go to Morro Bay City website and click on the Morro Bay Cares clicker there. It's right in front. You'll see it if you have need for delivery of medicine or groceries to your home if you can't get out. Please call. We have a number of volunteers in the community that have stepped up to offer their services. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins for your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to provide an update on a couple of items. We did get some questions about the Worf project, so I wanted to cover that, as well as the Department of Toxicity, the land use covenant work that they're doing in the public comment period that we're in, and then just a quick update on the COVID, paralleling what the mayor just said. So as it relates to the water reclamation facility project or Worf project, the city issued a notice to proceed to the Black and Beach Philo team to begin construction in mid-March. And so they've been busy getting everything prepared to do actual construction out there, including fencing and the required biological work that is supposed to occur before that work occurs, as well as the archaeological work that we need to do. And so things seem to be moving along pretty well. Council typically receives a quarterly report, as well as the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee. They would typically receive one in April. We are pushing that off a month because the Corolla team, as well as a lot of other folks, have had some challenges related to COVID-19. They've all been told to work from home, so it's created some challenges. In addition, the focus of the program management and city staff team is to get up and running and respond to SRF and WIFIA in terms of their reimbursement submission requirements, which are very significant and comprehensive. And we do need to do that well, so make sure that we are reimbursed fully for the costs that we've already borne for this project, including the SRF planning loan that's about $10 million and several millions of dollars of expenses that we've already engendered through the construction out on the Worf site. So we intend to come to the city council in May. Again, that typically would occur in April, but because of this important work to get the submission correct, out of the gate right, we will then get back on track on the normal schedule. We are also revamping the Worf website in its entirety to make it more user-friendly. I know we got some questions that there's outdated information and that is correct, so we're trying to do two things at once, update the website in terms of content, but also refresh it so it's more user-friendly. So you should see a big change in that beginning next week. As it relates to the Department of Toxicity Substance Report or work on the land use covenant out at the retired power plant sites, the city is aware of the administrative review of the DTS LUC process. The city will respond, memorializing DTS acknowledgement that the LUC will not be affected by the Worf project and nor will the LUC affect the Worf project. Our comments will be submitted along those lines. The entire community is encouraged to provide their own comments to the DTSC. The comments do not come to the city. We are not managing this process. The website, DTS website, there's an ability to submit comments through that, or you can email me directly if you can't find that website. My email is scollins@morobayca.gov if you can't find the DTS website to submit your own comments. And then lastly, on the COVID update, last week, we issued a press release regarding the Rock Solid Together Financial Economic Recovery Plan for Morro Bay. This is related to both the city finances as well as our business community. The council and the mayor have taken, or waved away their stipends for the remainder of this year. The city manager and department head teams have taken pay cuts, and we're working with the unions as well. And then we've instituted a hiring freeze, a travel freeze, and looking very closely at all of our expenditures. And on the business side, city council's approved deferral of transit occupancy tax collections for the month of February and March, as well as waiving late fees and penalties for late water and sewer fee payments, and are working with our tenants down on the waterfront harbor lease sites to see what we can do to help those individuals and their subtenants weather this economic storm. And we appreciate the work of the chamber connecting to as many businesses as possible, whether they are members of the chamber or not. They've opened their doors. And we are very pleased with the work that's going on at the county, with both the county, Slow, the other chambers, and the various cities, the other city managers, and the Reach team that used to be the Hourglass team are all working in concert to develop a long-term kind of recovery plan that accounts for the various phases it will go through, including reopening of our community only when it's the proper time to do so and aligns with the public health goals established by our public health officer at the county and the governor. So with that, that concludes my update.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that very much. With that, we'll go ahead and move to presentations. First up is the Morro Bay National Estuary Program, 2020 State of the Bay update. Lexi, I understand you're with us, at least virtually.
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to present to the council and everyone who's able to listen in. My name is Lexi Bell. I'm the Executive Director of the Morro Bay National Estuary Program. And we try to come to the council every once in a while and provide you various updates on what we're doing to help protect and restore the bay for people and wildlife. And those updates, our favorite one to give is this every-three-year State of the Bay report. So hopefully, this is an opportunity for those of you listening to take a break from COVID-19 for 10 minutes, think about our beautiful bay, which I know has been a source of comfort to all of us that are stuck at home, but hopefully able many of us to still see the bay and around and enjoy the beautiful place that we live and the relative environmental health that we're blessed with here and that we work really hard to maintain. So I'll just give a little overview of kind of how the bay is doing, highlighting a couple of questions from our report that just came out at the beginning of this year. So I can't see my own slides, so I'm not sure if I'm supposed to tell you how to switch the slides. Dana?
Can you share your screen if you can, if you have them up on your computer screen?
I can do that. Yes, I can.
And then you can just slide through them.
Okay.
It's the green one in the middle, I think. Yes, there's.
All right. So let me just make it a little bigger for you all. Is that working out for you?
Nice.
Okay.
Perfect.
So just a reminder, for those of you that are less familiar with the Estuary Program, we are a nonprofit, not a regulatory agency. We're a local to Morro Bay, but we're part of a network of national estuary programs across the country, which received this designation from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. So we're right up there with programs like the Puget Sound Partnership, San Francisco Bay, Santa Monica Bay, the New York-New Jersey Harbor, Indian River Lagoon in Florida, and Little Morro Bay. And we bring together citizens, government, nonprofits, and landowners to protect and restore the bay. This is our watershed. For those of you that are not used to thinking about Morro Bay and its scope of a watershed, you can see here is the main town, and this dotted line shows the whole area of land that drains into the bay. And we focus our work primarily in three areas: restoration and conservation, education outreach, and monitoring and research. So as I mentioned, we do State of the Bay every three years, and 2020 is one of those years. If you go to our website, mbnp.org.state-of-the-bay, you can get the online version, which is really, we're really excited about this year because it has a lot of extra interactive content. There's videos, there's extra links, so you can get that right from your home. And we do have paper copies if you want to get in touch with me and get one of those. But I would just review a couple of the common questions people ask us about how the bay is doing. And one of those questions is safe swimming. Is the bay safe enough for people to do water sports and interact with water? And so we look at a variety of pathogens that can cause illness, and in particular, we test for an indicator bacteria, enterococcus, which tells us what levels of the bacteria are likely to be in the bay. And we've been collecting this data for a number of years, and in the report, we include data from 2005, 2018. And the good news is, oh, well, this is first, are some of the sources of bacteria to the bay. So there's sources that are natural, such as wildlife, and there are sources that are man-made, such as leaking septic systems, wastewater treatment effluent, boat releases, livestock. So all sorts of components on land contribute bacteria. The good news is that the sites that we monitor are looking pretty good. You can, hopefully, you can see these green dots on the screen all along the bay. These are all the sites that we monitor monthly, and this shows that overall, these sites are maintaining very good or good status. That doesn't mean that every time you go to the water, they're meeting that status, but that means overall, over time, that's what they look like. We still always remind people to stay out of the water 72 hours after a storm, because that's when the runoff is coming off the land, and there is likely to be some elevated levels of bacteria. But overall, we're real excited to show that the bay is meeting some good bacteria standards for safe swimming. So one other thing that individuals can do to help keep the bay clean is to pick up after their pets. This is a major program, the Estuary Program. You may have been seeing these dispensers around. If you're walking your dog more frequently now, being home, you might be seeing new places that have dispensers. We have 33 in the watershed. Most of those are in Morro Bay, a couple in Los Osos. And they're funded by private donations and businesses and organizations that sponsor the dispensers. This keeps tons of pounds of pet waste out of the bay every year, and it really is a good way to reduce the bacteria source, particularly right along the waterfront. So another area of concern for the bay is eelgrass. I've come and talked to the city council and many other public groups about eelgrass in the past couple of years. We had a very large loss of acreage since 2007, 96% loss. So we've been really focused on this problem, trying to ascertain the causes of the loss in partnership with Cal Poly, with a number of research projects that are ongoing, and also trying to find ways to effectively restore eelgrass while not hurting the existing eelgrass that's there. And so this map gives a summary of that loss. So you can see on the left in 2007, there's quite a lot of green. That's the eelgrass. And you can see over to the right in 2017, there's not very much, but we included some circles here of areas, little bits of the eelgrass coming back. So the acreage in 2017 was down to about 14 acres, 15 acres. And we just flew a new map this year, 2019. So we're hoping to have that done soon. Cal Poly did a similar effort, and we're estimating that the acreage might have doubled up to 30 acres, but we haven't confirmed that yet with the final map. So we are seeing a little uptick, we think, or improvement, but still well below the 344 acres we had in 2007. So I mentioned restoration, and so this is a couple of photos showing how we do that. If you're out around Coleman Beach or Tylen's Park, those are the common areas. You might see us in the springtime. We just finished our 2020 restoration sites before the shelter-at-home order, so we're really happy that we were able to get those all in. And this is how we transplant eelgrass. On the left, you can see people gathering the eelgrass, putting it in buckets, and then we transplant it. On the right, you can see how that's done. We've had a lot of success with this. So you can see here, on the left are plots that were put in in 2019. That's what they look like when they start. And on the right are 2020, how much growth we've seen in those plots in just one year. are 2020, how much growth we've seen in those plots in just one year. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, one of the other subjects in our State of the Bay report that we cover is how we protect and restore habitat in the area. We do this through conservation of land, enhancement projects, and restoration projects, which help return habitat to its natural state. So this is a little teaser for our upcoming Science Explorations Talk in May. You'll have an opportunity to hear about some of these really exciting projects, where not only the Estuary Program is doing, but how we're collaborating with the Land Conservancy of San Luis Obispo County and the Global Resource Conservation District to make these projects happen in a way that's most efficient and beneficial to both landowners and the bay. So that's coming up for you to learn more. So here's a couple tips. People can always help the bay. When you're out and about, make sure to pick up after your pet. Don't dump things down the storm drain. It does go directly to the bay. And turn off the tap and try to conserve water, so there's more water for our wildlife. So in closing, I just wanted to share a few events that are coming up. Now, most of these are online. We're having a trivia night at the end of April, so that'll be a fun time to test your knowledge of the bay and a way to interact with your community about the bay. And then on May 7th is that Science Explorations Talk I mentioned. We're going to do that through Zoom, and you'll hear from a couple of our staff members talking about some projects, like our recent floodplain restoration project. And then also hear from two of our partners, the RCD and the Land Conservancy. And you'll have an opportunity to ask those folks questions. And then we're putting some of our hikes up on Morro Bay State, on our blog, mbnep.org/blog. And then finally, there's one thing we're not putting online, and that's Paddle for a Cause, the month of May. So you can do your own and paddle or walk the waterfront and pick up trash and report that. And we'll have some information on our website, how you can report that, and we can all collectively participate in a beach and bay cleanup, even though we're not all together. So you can learn more at mbnep.org/statedbay or by subscribing to our blog or finding us on social media. Thank you for allowing me to present, and please let me have any questions.
Thank you, Lexi. Appreciate the presentation. It's great to be in partnership with you as a city. One of my questions would be, how can we continue to assist you, to advocate for your needs, either federally or locally, and how can the city help?
I appreciate that. We've had a really great partnership with the city for a very long time. I think the Muts for the Bay Program is a great example. Continuing to support that program is really essential to us, being able to continue to have those dispensers in the watershed. Right now, we're kind of in the middle of trying to work towards our federal funding, but we always appreciate the support that the city shows us in that process as well. I think helping to get the word out is great, helping to help citizens understand the resources available to them, to be stewards of the bay, participate and learn more, and enjoy the bay in a way that's friendly to the wildlife and habitats we have.
And then, just a couple of general questions. One, the 97% loss of eelgrass, which I think most all of us are familiar with, have we determined the cause specifically why that has receded to that extent?
Yeah, our hypothesis on that, in partnership with Cal Poly, is that we likely face a number of water quality conditions that impact the eelgrass. And we looked at increased temperatures and reduced circulation in the bay. So if you noticed on that map, most of the loss is in the back portion of the bay, where circulation, it's hard to see in the map, but there are quite a few beds up towards the navigation channel near more of the city proper. And then south of the State Park Marina is where most of that loss happened. And so one idea is that the bay, over time, the circulation has declined in the back part of the bay, and that means the water sits there longer, heats up, and bacteria nitrates might increase and creates poorer conditions for eelgrass. A second thought is how sediment has moved around in the bay. Cal Poly looked at modeling the changes, sedimentation and erosion changes in the bay over time. And so they're working on some research papers to show how that might line up with the areas that we experience loss.
Great. Thank you for that. And I think maybe the most important question, how can we as community members contribute to your organization?
Ah, yes, that's a great question.
Or volunteerism or financially?
Yeah. So if you go to our website, mbnep.org, there is a link for, to donate, if you'd like to donate. We are a local nonprofit. You can donate directly to us. And there's also a number of volunteer opportunities listed. There's a volunteer tab. And there's some of those are things you can do from home while you're staying at home. So we have a number of community science efforts where people contribute their time to collect data. And then, once we're allowed to be together, we have a number of other volunteer opportunities, getting out and helping collect water quality data, helping restore eelgrass, and helping with outreach.
Great. Well, thank you for that. And I appreciate the educational efforts, not only for us adults, but for young people as well, who really need to understand and learn about our wonderful bay as early in life as possible to help preserve it throughout the rest of their lives. With that, I'll ask Councilmember Heller, has any questions?
I don't. Mr. Mayor, you asked all the questions I wanted to ask, so I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McPherson, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank you, Lexi, for the work that you're doing. It's tremendous. We're so pleased to have this resource in our community and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Addus, any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much, Lexi, for this information. It was so nice to hear about something inspiring that isn't about the crisis. And I love the ideas that you're putting up online to share with the community and keep the interest alive. It's wonderful to see. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Davis, comments or questions?
Just thank you, Lexi.
Thank you.
Great. Lexi, thanks for virtually being here. We appreciate it. Great presentation, and we look forward to seeing you soon. Call on us when you need advocacy at any time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a great evening. With that, I'll move to our next presentation, the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Update, and Erica Crawford, our CEO.
Erica, can you hear me?
There you are. Hi.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. I'm a little sheepish. Unfortunately, my update will be delving into the crisis, but I also appreciated Lexi's presentation. It was wonderful. So thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council and city staff. My name is Erica Crawford. I'm the CEO of the Morro Bay Chamber. It's an honor to be here to provide you with an update of the chamber's activity. I do have a few slides at the end, but I'm mostly just going to be talking with you this evening. I want to begin with the most critical communication for our business community right now, and that is the information that is both on our resources page at morrochamber.org, and also on the regional resources page, which is recovercentralcoast.org. I am serving on a task force for regional recovery that's led by Reach, plus county employees Carolyn Bergen-Morgan Terrell. We begin our weekly meetings this Thursday, and we'll be discussing relief, reopening, and recovery. I'm also happy to be serving on the city's EOC branch that's called Community Recovery, and intend to be able to share our work here, locally on the ground, up to the region, and vice versa. I'm also on weekly calls with my counterparts in the northern Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo County region. We have a Chamber Coalition, and we meet every Friday to share information. And I believe firmly that we're going to get through this working more closely together now than maybe any of us ever thought possible. I do want to encourage all members of the business community who are tuning in tonight to please navigate to our resources page. We are updating and augmenting that information every day. Certain issues seem to peak on various days, so we're reordering the way we're providing that information to make sure we're getting the most relevant information at the top. So again, that resource is morrochamber.org. There's a tab, the COVID-19 page. On that page, you'll find information and application links to SBA and U.S. Department of Treasury programs like the IDOL, or the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, and the PPP, or the Paycheck Protection Program, and a list of lenders by the SBA. Just a reminder that the PPP is being processed through commercial banks and not directly through the SBA. That's unlike the IDOL, which is direct through SBA. On the page, there's also HR assistance and information on layoffs and furloughs. There is information on the Disaster Unemployment Assistance Program through EDD. There is an update on that program, and it's a bit heartbreaking. Many of our self-employed business owners did a P, or they applied through EDD for the Disaster Unemployment Assistance through the Unemployment Insurance Portal that was not, it's not built for that purpose. And so we've heard quite a few people receiving denial letters from EDD. So they do need to appeal those denials. The EDD system is now outfitted to accommodate the needs. If anybody listening has questions about that, please get in touch with me. My content information's on the chamber's page. There are also on the page helpful tips on rent and lease negotiations. I want to give a special thank you to Jane Heath, our local attorney here in Morro Bay. She's been helping with some of the employer-employee pieces and some of landlord-lessee pieces. There's some information about insurance, and there's a library of webinars that are on that page. The page has been viewed 2,200 times in the last 28 days, and that's by one and a half thousand unique viewers. And I want to just give a special shout out to Councilmember Heller, who contributed early on some of the content on that page. We are at the chamber in regular contact with the Director of the SBDC San Luis Obispo Office. That's Judy Mahan, who's also a Morro Bay resident. Her direct contact information, she was nice enough to provide her cell phone number, is up on the resources page. A recent development is that the SBDC has been working with Collaboration Consulting Group, and they have created four distinct task forces to help businesses. So these are in the areas of CPAs, there are HR professionals, there are bankers who are willing to help non-clients with sort of the process through the PPP, but not to actually apply, but to help navigate. And then there are e-commerce professionals who are there to assist businesses who are looking to transition to online sales. And as you know, the PPP is being run through commercial banks, but funded through SBA and Treasury. We continue to hear about the challenges of the program. This is a program that was rolled out in seven days nationwide, and then asked really for quite a lot of commercial banks. There were challenges with applications, with guidance, and now there are challenges with loan amounts. So our Congressman, Salud Carvajal, is actively working on the federal level on a fourth wave of legislation, what he's referred to as CARES Act 2.0, that does seek to infuse more capital into these programs. I truly sincerely wish that I could provide you with a more positive update, the assistance programs out there, but I cannot. Access to this capital has been challenging. It has been a moving target with multiple iterations of applications, and it's been underwhelming in its performance. Some applicants are hearing that their PPP loans will be below the dollar amount that they need. I have yet to hear from anyone local who has received in advance on the IDOL or the EIDL, or let alone a payout from the IDOL without. The SBDC did send a survey out today. I do imagine we'll be getting some information on how many of our region's local businesses have received any federal assistance whatsoever. On another topic, or, you know, I just wanted to update you on some of the outreach the chamber's been engaged in since mid-March. Our outreach has been conducted in sort of waves, and much of it has been done by volunteers, fellow business owners helping their business owners in town. Our first target by industry was restaurants. We reached out to all restaurants in town to get information about their open hours and adapted service. I want to publicly apologize if there are any restaurants that we missed that was not intentional. What was intentional was creating this document as a Google Doc so that we could real-time update it with information about businesses who are adapting to curbside to-go and to delivery. After that outreach, we held an evening conference call in advance of the county's directive to cease alcohol sales over St. Patrick's Bay. We had 30 people on the call. And we have been working in close collaboration with the city's tourism department to make sure that that list and that curbside pickup and delivery list and our market list is updated regularly. We also took care to shop locally. We produced those curbside to-go signs with Gary at Goofy Graphic. The next wave of outreach was to hotels. We contacted every hotel in the city limits to provide resources on the federal assistance programs. But further, we were conducting a qualitative survey of our hoteliers, layoffs and furloughs, property ownership and mortgage status, and we were asking for feedback on what sort of local relief could make a difference for their businesses and for their cash flow. We made that data anonymous, and then we submitted it to City Manager Scott Collins to ensure that the voice of business of this sector would be taken into consideration as the city formulated its TOT relief plans. And we are, we want to say thank you very, very much to this council for deferring TOT to go. Ongoing right now, we are reaching out to the construction industry. We have been contacting contractors and subcontractors, electricians and plumbers who have pulled a permit in the city over the last five years. I want to say thank you to Scott Graham for providing us with that list. We are asking questions about changes in their business practice, asking for their suggestions on stimulating growth for their industry locally, and we're asking for input on their workforce capacity to be able to increase workload should an infrastructure stimulus be included in some future state or federal stimulus package. We have sent eight emails to the 800 business email contacts that we have currently in our database. These emails are being sent to both members and non-members. If people are not receiving messages from the chamber, let me know. We will happily add you to our distribution list. We are including timely information about federal assistance programs, adjustments to the programs, free webinars on the programs, and my direct cell phone number is included. Anyone is welcome to call me at this time. I'm here to help anybody in the business community. The chamber has lifted its paywall, as Scott said, and that's for the time being. We believe that this crisis is the common denominator for all of us. So now, more than ever, the chamber is really living its purpose to connect businesses to information that's critical, not just for thriving, but actually for survival. We are moving into convening the business community virtually, so we'll host five Zoom events through May 1st. We're bringing back our Ask Me Anything series, so we'll open it up this Friday. Any businesses, welcome to participate. We'll be doing them as Facebook Live Event, or Facebook Events, so you can get the links. Each one has a distinctive link to be mindful of security. I just have a couple of slides that I want to share, but before I do that, I need to and want to really sincerely thank the city staff and the city leadership. We are working very closely together, and I believe that we are modeling what public and private collaboration can look like for the county. We are breaking silos. We're looking for frames that we can and should be working together within. And I think that's true for Chamber, T-Bid, and the city. On that note, we do have a GAC meeting in the morning. That's our Governmental Affairs Committee. We have a GAC meeting in the morning and have invited many of the city's department heads in community development and finance and tourism at Harbor, along with the city manager, to have an hour-long discussion on the topic of recovery. And then I'll be participating in a T-Bid roundtable this Thursday. So we are collaborating together. Two slides. Let me see if I can figure out how to do it. Here we go. Share. You guys see that?
Almost.
Okay.
There we go.
So we did, we released a survey. To date, we've just got 59 responses, but our Recreation Department, under Kirk's leadership, is doing direct outreach to a list of all business license holders that was provided by Jen Callaway. So thank you very much for your help with that. And so we've reopened the survey, but as of this morning, I wanted to share with you that it looks like our business community, over 40% of our businesses surveyed, their sales are down 75 to 100%. Another 20% are down over 50%. And I think this is important information, as, you know, we know and we're living that the city's budget and the city's finances and so much of the general fund budget being composed of sales tax and TOT, that this is indicative of a challenge. We also did ask questions about renting. We knew in 2016, when we did our business walk, that a disproportionate amount of our business owners are renting, many of them on month-to-month leases. So we're discovering that only 21% of the renters who have surveyed have heard from landlords about discounted, deferred, or waived rent for March and April. And then, one last one. So just communications campaigns now, more than ever, is something you'll be seeing, and we do intend to prop up the Rock Solid Together campaign that the city initiated for recovery. And to end on a positive note, these are the 40 businesses and nonprofits. Lexi is in there, the National Estuary Foundation, who have sent in renewal investments or who have joined our chamber since March 13th. This is 40, these are 40 businesses. This is 40, these are 40 businesses who have said, yes, uh, we are stronger together. The chamber does play a role in recovery and many of these businesses are closed, um, but they are, they are continuing to invest in our community. So I really wanted to shine a light on those people. That is, that's it. I'm here for you if you have any questions.
Thank you, Erica. Presentation, I just want to make note of the fact that, um, you have made significant cuts in your staff. You may well be the staff, but you are doing.
Lisa, Lisa's helping.
Lisa, I'm sorry, Lisa. And, and, and we sincerely appreciate the heroic effort that the chamber is making. And I want to note that you're not just reaching out to your member businesses, but you're reaching out to all businesses in the community regardless of membership in the chamber. And, and I, I just really appreciate that. I also want to applaud you for your work with Reach or the former Hourglass Initiative. I know that you've been an integral part in being involved with, um, the development of that website. And if you would maybe just mention where that site is and what it might be able to do, or if that's a link on your page, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, yes. Um, and yes, you are, yes. So it's recovercentralcoast.org. I think I saw that Carolyn is, is somewhere in our mix today, so I, I might defer to Carolyn for more information on it because she is the project manager with Reach. But, um, our task force looked at, um, you know, what, what are the, the absolute must-have pieces of information that we want to be able to share across the region, um, in northern Santa Barbara County and Slow County? And so that, that is the collector, much like, um, uh, the, the general page helped me recover slow. Is that the, what's the general, um?
Ready, slow.
Thank you, thank you. Um, readyslow.org. It aspires for that sort of a, a catch-all, um, landing page for economic recovery, resilience, um, reopening and relief, a, a place where people can look to see what, what other municipalities and what the counties are doing to, um, to help with relief for businesses who are really struggling with cash flow.
And is there a?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is there a link on your webpage?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. So, so we could go to morrowbaychamber.org or morrowchamber.org and?
That's right. Morrowchamber.org, yep. And we'll put it right up at the top.
Great, thank you for that. Um, with that, um, I will open it up to any council member questions. Council member Davis, any questions or comments?
No, just thank you, Erica, for your stellar work.
And council member McPherson?
Yes, I just echo, uh, my fellow council member. Thank you, thank you. You've been a great leader and you've really taken this on in a big way, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Council member Heller?
Yes, uh, thank you, Erica, so much for your work. You are in a very challenging position, probably the most challenging position you've been in in your life, uh, with respect to professional activities. And, uh, I just want to say you're doing a great job. I also want to say that, uh, I, I just can't tell you how remarkable you are. I, I do get concerned about your health and whether or not you're taking care of yourself. Just want to remind you, you can't fix everything. Uh, you're on the front lines dealing with businesses that are under great stress and I hope that you're taking care of yourself and dealing with the stress that you're going to inevitably face, uh, in the position that you're doing. Um, and please, uh, let us know how we can help you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you, council member Heller, for your assistance, as she mentioned, with, uh, your work of, um, on their page. Um, and then council member Addis, any comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you, Erica, for everything you're doing and, um, thank you for joining the community calls with us. I think I've, I've had a lot of positive feedback from the community on getting to hear from the chamber. I'm glad to hear the chamber is going to start virtual events. And can you remind us if you know what time your virtual events are going to be? I know you said that you're going to post them on the Facebook event pages for the chamber, but do you know what time you'll have those?
We're going to do lunch ones to start. Um, I've seen some chambers doing like happy hours, but we're going to start with lunches. So they're from 12 to 1 o'clock. Um, so it'll be on, starting this Friday. And while I just want to say that I'm not in this lone, I appreciate your, your care and concern for the stress level. Um, I was raised by a critical care nurse, so I'm, I'm used to that. But, um, but I also have an incredible board of directors and our board chairman, Steve Peck, has stepped up. Basically, staff members doing incredible help, helpful work. Our board treasurer, Jeff Buckles, our vice chair, Tim Cowan, and Candy Root, formerly of the Inn at Morro Bay, who's been, uh, very sadly laid off with the closure of that business, but she's continuing on in her, um, vice, or in her secretary role with the chamber. So people have really stepped up. I have an amazing team around me.
Great. Great. And, uh, just, uh, maybe two last questions. One, the GAC meeting tomorrow, uh, that will be by Zoom or is that?
Oh, yeah, yes, yeah. That's a Zoom. We're, we're not, we're not coming together, um, in person. So that, that's a Zoom, uh, Zoom meeting tomorrow with the department heads and with our GAC committee.
Great. And then lastly, if one wanted to join the chamber or don't the chamber, how can we do that?
Uh, yeah, we are happy to, um, receive new investments. We, we had two, Comfort Inn and the Phoenix Consulting Group have joined. You can reach out to me, we'll get you all set up through Lisa. Um, and you know, we're not as, uh, one of the challenges is that we are not a charitable organization. We are a trade organization. We're a 501(c)(6) nonprofit. Um, so we do not have a C3 where you can get a tax, you can get a tax deduction or a, a charitable contribution kind of credit. And it's also challenging because C6 nonprofits have not been recognized by any of the federal assistance programs. Um, we, we are unable to apply for assistance in that way. Um, so membership investments, membership comes with privileges and, and, and helping, uh, your fellow community members. And a fee wall is up now, but we do intend to, um, return to a membership-focused delivery model.
Great, thank you, Erica. You're up to be safe and well.
Thank you, you too. Thanks for having me.
All right. Um, ladies and gentlemen in TV land, um, I am going to open up general public comment now. Um, this is public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot continue to stay and watch and you'd like to make comments now or any general comments you'd like to make. Um, if you'd like to speak, um, you can, uh, dial the following number, just as a reminder, The show number is number 2607 and the guest PIN is number 464192. And so with that, I'm going to open up general public comment and Ask AGP. If you have a queue, how many you have in the queue and go ahead and give us our first guest.
We have eight in the queue and here's the first guest, Mr. Mayor.
Great. And just a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a three-minute time limit. Um, we don't want to be rude, but at the end of three minutes, um, our city clerk will chime in and mention that your time is up. So thank you. So, uh, go ahead and give us our first public commenter.
And they are unmuted and should be talking to you.
Okay, welcome.
Uh, guest number one, are you there?
Hello?
Hello? Is anybody there? They've been on the line for an hour and 32 minutes, so I'm not sure.
Hello?
There, there.
General public comment?
Yes, hi, my name is Reema Corey. I'm from the hookah chamber of commerce. Sorry for the delay. You were, I was, I had this call muted for a while. But, um, I did wanted to give general comment with regards to the tobacco flavor ban. Is this the appropriate time to give that comment?
You can do that now, that's, that's fine.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. So, um, again, I'm with the hookah chamber of commerce. Uh, my name is Reema Corey and I, I do realize that it's an agenda item to ban flavored tobacco. Um, but I do want it before, um, a thousand-year cultural tradition of hookah is, uh, banned, I wanted to bring to your attention the difference between hookah and vape. Uh, hookah is, has been around for over a thousand years. It's, uh, traditionally practiced by, um, Middle Easterners, Armenians, um, Turks, Indians, Persians. Um, and, and it's very different from vape, meaning that the actual hookah itself is, uh, about three feet tall. It takes about 20 to 30 minutes to set up. Hookas are generally about $200 to purchase. Uh, so many times it's out of the price range of most kids. Um, and it's not very easy to conceal. So kids aren't really hiding them in their pocket, um, and setting them up in the bathrooms at school during recess. Um, but because of all of the issues going on with vape, which is very easy to conceal, um, the, it, hookah's been conflated with, with vape and inadvertently, I believe that it's being, uh, banned or, you know, coupled with flavored tobacco and being banned. Hookah tobacco only comes in flavors, so a tobacco flavor ban would mean a ban on hookah. And there's no research or studies or, um, evidence to show that we are having a hookah epidemic. Kids aren't running around with hookas. Um, the CDC and FDA has made it very clear that although, uh, there is evidence that flavors do entice, uh, youth, that they do not see a relationship with flavors and youth usage with hookah. In fact, hookah usage is, um, of all the tobaccos, uh, that youth can use is the lowest with youth. So I, I just wanted to bring it to, you know, the mayor and council's attention that there are some very big differences between with hookah and vape and, uh, hookah is not vape. In fact, Governor Gavin Newsom had stated in his executive order address on September 16th that hookah is just not the problem in classrooms. And, you know, I know that there were some issues several months back with deaths, uh, related to, um, as it turns out, uh, according to the CDC findings, to THC, uh, vape, that is not hookah. And so I, I think our ask is, is that before our culture.
Three minutes.
Uh, becomes banned, we certainly wanted to bring it to, you know, council and the mayor's attention that, uh, hookah is definitely not the problem and that we would like your consideration to potentially, um, exempt hookah from the tobacco flavor ban. Um, there's been many changes in the past just few months.
Can you hear me?
FDA has passed a 21 and over minimum age requirement amongst all 50 states, um, to purchase tobacco. Uh, in addition to that, um, e-cigarette, flavored e-cigarette and flavored cartridges, um, has also been banned.
Thank you for your comment.
February, the first week of February. And then most importantly, on May 12th, 2020, is the FDA deadline for all vape and hookah products to be accepted by the FDA. So any product that.
Mayor, would you like me to go to the next commenter?
Yes, time is.
Will be unauthorized and no longer on the market. So anyways, I wanted to thank you for this opportunity and time. Uh, and again, our ask is that you consider our thousand-year tradition and exempt hookah, traditional hookah from your tobacco flavor ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll, AGP will go to the next commenter.
There you go. And next commenter, you are live.
Welcome.
Um, is it me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry about that. This is a little bit new for me. Usually I'm used to showing up, um, in person, you know? Hi, my name is Neve Donahue. Um, I just wanted to say that I strongly oppose any flavor ban and I am begging that the city works together with hookah chamber so that we can all come to a fair compromise, um, that will not completely eradicate, you know, this centuries-old tradition. The main issue with these flavor bans coming up is the focus should be on vape and not on hookah. Hookah is not the culprit, um, of the teen vaping epidemic. Um, I just ask that you please do your research, please reach out to hookah chamber and let's work together, um, so that we can come up with a fair compromise. Um, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. AGP, next up, please.
Go, go ahead caller.
Hello, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, hi. Okay. Hi, I'm George Johnson. I'm with Regal Hookai, manufacturer wooden hookah pipes in a traditional fashion. I, um, love your beautiful town and I would like to thank you guys for being on the front lines as well. You guys mentioned that, you know, the first responders, but I also think that legislators and, you know, uh, are also on the front lines trying to deal with this current epidemic that we're facing. So thank you. Um, that being said, I, I do have fond memories of visiting my great aunt Belly, who lived to be 101 years old in Morro Bay, and having to explain to her that those weren't seals, but surfers down in the ocean. Um, but I, I would just like to bring to your attention that the flavor ban will affect all pipe tobaccos as well. So, um, hookah is in the tax class C, which is in the same tax class as, uh, traditional briar pipes. And that is definitely how hookah is used, uh, similar to what your grandfather would smoke at the end of a long day fireside with a wooden pipe and, uh, aromatic flavors of cherry or vanilla. It's not used habitually in a very large, uh, easy way. You, you cannot smoke hookah on your lunch break if you had the time. You can't smoke hookah while driving and it's not something that is easily done. So my request is for a cultural exemption for traditional hookah, non-electronics, so that we don't open any loopholes for anybody to label a vaping product as a hookah. Um, we have had success in doing so and the state, on the state level last year with SB 38, we had a cultural exemption for hookah products. In Burbank City, we have a cultural exemption. Los Angeles City is set to, uh, have their bill. We have a, a small carve-out there. San Diego County, Irvine, Culver City, El Cajon, California, we, you may or may not have a large community of Middle Eastern people that enjoy hookah and come from a rich heritage that enjoys hookah or pipe smoking, but these wins are cumulative and we need your help in doing what's right so that we can show to other legislators in other cities that these cultures matter, these traditions matter, and that, that other cities are doing the right thing. We're leading the, the, the cause against us, the epidemic of teen vaping. And hookah is just not part of it. And I, it's not a black and white issue. It is the many areas in between. You guys have already exempted menthol cigarettes and I would just hope that hookah could be also be considered for a traditional carve-out. And that being said, thank you so much for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm of course available for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, AGP, next up.
All right. There you go, next caller.
Welcome.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello?
Go ahead caller, we can hear you.
Um, this is Melanie Williams Mayhem. Um, I, can I, you can't hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so, sorry about that. From the Public Policy Institute of California, March 20th, 2020. California has the largest at-risk sectors in accommodations and food service, arts and entertainment, recreation and agriculture. Californiapudgetcenter.org also reports that leisure and hospitality and retail trade will take a major hit because the COVID shutdown has a ripple effect in society. With this in mind, is this the right time to put in a $126 million sewer and water reclamation facility in a tourist town of 10,000 residents? 2.17 million residents of California have filed for unemployment in the last three weeks, according to the Mercury News. This is the beginning of a long-term economic crisis and shouldn't we be paring down and considering what our citizens will need? Some are one paycheck away from food insecurity. Our industry here needs your assistance. Please think about the people who live here, who put you in office, who need your help. We need a leader, not a developer. Please explain to me how we can weather this storm. Should we be spending money on a shiny new object when we all, when we have an old object that still works fine? With kayakas leaving our sewer, won't that help? Is it essential? I am disappointed that the city is hiring a consultant to plan how to fix our pipes as well. Isn't that Rob Leibig's job? I, I'm very confused about that. Why are we spending money like we have it when we clearly don't? If you are trying to bankrupt this town and turn it over to the county, you are doing a marvelous job. You're leading this city into extinction, project after project after project, all with consultant after consultant after consultant. These are extraordinary times. Please think of all of us as humans, not a means to. Please think of all of us as humans, not a means to a shiny new object. Thanks to Erica for your efforts. It's a tough time for you, I know. Um, and Scott, I liked what I heard tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie. Um, AGP, next up.
There we go. Next caller, you are live.
Good evening and welcome.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Betty Winholt. I'm on the phone, um, because the computer, this live streaming's not happening. The audio streaming is not happening. And I'm wondering how you're going to get public input from people when they can't find you online. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you, Betty. AGP, next up.
Next caller, you are live.
Hello?
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 Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Dan Sedley from Morro Bay. Uh, like, uh, Ms. Winholt's, I, I would like to make aware that the, the link for the, the, the city agenda to, to log into Channel twenty is definitely not working. I've, I've tried logging in, uh, a dozen times, and it may work for a few minutes, but it mostly doesn't have audio. Um, it, and I, I request that you, that you send AGP, uh, an email, which I have done to let them know that it's not working, uh, essentially at all. Um, and so, and so I asked, I, I asked that this be repaired, and I further asked that any kind of visual presentations be described in length. Uh, those of us that, that don't have cable, uh, were prevented from seeing it on cable. And, and this, this needs to be repaired so that we can participate. Um, that, that's an extreme concern to me. Uh, second of all, I, I would like to comment about, um, Ms. Mahan's comments in terms of, of putting in a conveyance system along Quintana at a time when our city is being bankrupted, our, our, our merchants are, are going under. Uh, if, if they're able to survive at all. Like, likewise, the city budget has to be going under as well and, and diving well into, uh, emergency reserves. And, and while I do know that, that the city budget is not part of, of the sewer, the sewer project budgeting, the, 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 building the sewer at this time further bankrupts that Quinta, all those Quintana businesses, and it's just the bad time and the wrong time to do it. And my request is that you postpone that until our city can get back on its feet, both, both the merchants up and running again, and the city's, the city's finances up and, and running again. So, so the, the, the conveyance project, construction project, it, it will further bankrupt the city, and so it does have that impact, impact, even though they are two different budgets. Uh, thirdly and lastly, I'm, I'm concerned that there has been no public presentation of, of what the city plans to do about its finances. I've, I've sent requests for, uh, information. Uh, I, I've been given nothing. I, I've seen other cities in our, in the media are saying what they intend to do, how, how they're intending to address that. Uh, I've only seen one article, I think in Slow Times, discussing Morro Bay about the possibility of, of administrative, uh, uh, Morro Bay staff voluntarily participating in a percent pay cut. That's the only thing that I have seen that's been put out for public consumption, and that, that's been via the media, not, not via our city broadcast. And I'm, I'm hoping that the city will, will bring us on, we, we, the public on board as soon as possible, um, e- even before the meeting on the twenty-eighth, which, which I've heard rumor that that is where it may be discussed. But I, I, I think the citizens are concerned as to why it's not being discussed for their edification right now. And, uh, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, AGP, next up.
Okay, um, next caller, please. Hello, next caller, you are live. Next caller? Is anybody there? Um, mayor?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, good, I'm glad I didn't lose you.
No, I'm just, um, maybe we don't have a connection, maybe go to the next individual.
All right, we'll try that. All right.
Mayor Heding?
There we go.
Hi, this is.
Welcome.
Hi, Mayor Heding and city council members. This is Michelle Lester-Cateray.
Welcome, Michelle.
Uh, how are you? I'm well. Um, I'm talk, hi, Dave. Uh, I'm, I'm calling regarding the agenda number C four, uh, and the smoking ordinance that you're planning on discussing later on this evening. Um, I think there's some areas that are a little gray when it comes to mo-, um, single-family homes in Morro Bay and, um, secondhand smoke coming across from one home to another, because we are in such close proximity, especially like, you know, residences up in North Morro Bay. There's less than a twenty-foot, even twenty-five-foot distance between some of the homes. And, um, with a lot of people being, uh, currently at home, obviously, everybody, and people that smoke, it's become chronic. Um, people are literally sitting outside on their property, smoking non-stop, um, which basically prohibits anybody from going outside to get exercise. It comes in front doors, it comes through vents, it comes through cracks in windows, and, you know, the typical. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, some language can be placed in the new ordinance regarding single-family residences that are in these close proximities, and that something can be mentioned about, you know, prohibiting the cigarette smoke of people sitting on their porches and just smoking all day long, whereas if they choose to do so, they can go in their own home, or go in their garage, or go sit in their vehicle, um, or exit their premises completely. Um, as the majority of the houses in, uh, this area are either home-owned or rental homes, we have very few multiple, um, unit residences, like apartments or condos, um, that would, you know, where houses fall into. So I'm hoping that, um, something, some stronger language can be put in there regarding single-family residences and, um, the chronic smoking that's going on and disturbing, especially those that have, um, medical conditions, because it just exacerbates it. So, um, other than that, that's all I wanted to say for this evening.
Thank you, Michelle.
So thank you, council members.
Hey, AGP, um, we have another call?
Well, we don't have any more in the queue, but I could go back to the last one and see if we can try to raise them, if you want.
Please do.
Okay, caller, are you there? Uh, is anybody there? Hmm, maybe not, mayor.
Okay. Um, if you have no, uh, other individuals in the queue, I'll go ahead and close, uh, general public comment and bring it back to council. Um, either Dana or AGP, could you just, uh, comment on maybe the issue raised by Ms. Winholt's and Mr. Sedley regarding quote-unquote "the link is not working" and, um, difficulties with public comment online? Um, can the public members zoom in?
Um, you know, that is something that they have to have your passcodes for, and so at this point, probably not. The, um, issues online, um, we are having reports of issues all over the county. So we're not sure. We're trying to restart our devices and see if that helps. But, uh, this seems like a bigger problem for, and you have to realize that since everybody's at home, everybody and their brother on the internet. So this might be a challenge for some areas. And, uh, we'll, we'll keep you updated as best we can.
Well, thank you for your work, we understand that. But at least, um, it appears as if the phone lines are working well, and there is the capacity to call in and be in the queue.
And this will be recorded and played back on the channel, so if somebody did miss it, they can go back and catch it again.
Thank you so much for that. Um, with regard to Mr. Sedley's issue, um, about no public presentation on the city's financial, uh, position, that, um, has been agendized for the, um, April twenty-eighth meeting. There will be a comprehensive presentation of the fourth quarter of this fiscal year impact, and also, um, a projection on the impact for next fiscal year, along with a discussion regarding potential mitigations for, um, major reductions in revenues, um, that might be expected or will be expected during this time. So I just wanted to, to point that out. And, um, any other, uh, comments from council? Hearing none, I will close public comment and move us to the next item, which is the consent agenda. I'm going to reopen public comment for the consent agenda. Any members of our public, uh, out there in TV land or filtering place, um, if you would like to, to speak now? Once again, to give you that phone number. It is, uh, one eight one eight seven nine four seven zero zero four. Joe is number two six zero seven. And the guest pin is number four six four one nine two. So this is public comment on consent agenda items. Um, AGP, do we have anybody in the queue?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. If you bear with me, council, for just a couple of seconds, um, make sure that, people may have just heard that phone number and might be calling in. Um, hearing none, then I will close public comment on the consent agenda and ask either for motion for approval, or if you'd like to pull any items, uh, council members, please advise, and let me start with Councilmember Heller.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull A eight, A nine, and A twelve.
Okay, A eight, A nine, and A twelve. Thank you. Councilmember McPherson?
I have no items to pull.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis?
I don't have any items to pull.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
No, I don't have any items.
So with that, um, council, I will take a motion for approval of A one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Uh, ten and eleven, thank you. I just had my page for the round, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll move to approve those items on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So, uh, motion by Councilmember Addis for approval of those items, second by Councilmember Davis. Um, any discussion? Not, uh, roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carried by.
Okay, thank you for that, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Heller, item A eight, first, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the questions I have about this, uh, assessment, um, this is the first, apparently, of three required resolutions that, uh, we have to go through, apparently, for this. And I'm wondering if, uh, if our city attorney, Mr. Newmeyer, is he on the, on the line here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. So Chris, I'm wondering, uh, is there another way to deal with this? Is the, are the three resolutions required by law? It seems like kind of a tedious process. Um, can you enlighten me on that?
Under the landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district law that these were approved with, uh, back when, this is the process. Um, I suppose there could be some sort of agreement reached with the, uh, communities on, uh, not going through this legal process every year. But this is the, uh, procedure that needs to be followed as long as we're using this state law. Um, essentially, when the, uh, original development occurred, there was an agreement with the property owner, um, at that time, that there would be these assessments paid, and then they have to be renewed each year. So, um, if the council would like, I could take a look at, uh, whether there's some other procedure the city could follow that, uh, would not involve doing these three resolutions. Um, I can say for sure, if the community would agree to, to basically encumber themselves, uh, you know, in perpetuity for paying these assessments, we wouldn't have to do it. But, um, I doubt that would happen.
Yeah, well, okay, so I'm not suggesting that. I'm just wondering if there are options, uh, that are, that might be a little more streamlined. Uh, and I think you've answered that question. Um, my other question is, um, so apparently when this was first initiated in nineteen ninety-six, the amount that was levied was about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And it looks like, in reading this, that that number has carried forward since that point. Is that right? Over the last twenty-four years, that's been the same amount that's assessed every year?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just want to be clarified about that. Um, now, at what point, if, for example, the residents or the city felt that the assessment should be increased or decreased, um, is that a Prop two eighteen process? And who would initiate that, um, that process?
This is actually, uh, subject to every year, as long as we're following these procedures, uh, to, you know, these three resolutions. Essentially, the engineer's report, uh, concludes that the, whether or not the money's needed to maintain, uh, you know, the development that's occurred, to maintain the improvements. And if that engineer's report concludes as such, then it's going to be assessed. So, um, if, uh, there was, you know, a, I guess, a desire to increase it or decrease it, then this is the process, you know, as we go through these three resolutions, that somebody would challenge either, um, this initial resolution, or they would more specifically challenge the engineer's report as being inaccurate or not needed. But this all goes back to the very beginning of the development, when, uh, an original deal was struck, uh, between the property developer and the city.
Okay, that makes sense. I just, what was, what seemed stark to me was that it's the same assessment that we've had for twenty-four years, and the buying power, obviously, of a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars is significantly different today, uh, than it was twenty-four years ago. I'm not suggesting that it be raised or lowered. I just wanted to clarify that, uh, that issue. And so the engineer's report would have to be challenged by somebody in terms of whether that's enough or too much.
Yes, and, uh, to, to be frank, the fact that the number has stayed constant over the years, I think is, um, the city, uh, not factoring in inflation. Um, I would think that there is room to assess more, uh, lawfully. And I think that, uh, by the city keeping the number constant and not reflecting inflation is, uh, doing what, what small favor the city can to the community that's paying this. Um, but you're correct that, uh, you know, obviously, inflation has gone up since the original assessment, but the assessment has not.
And then my last question on this, is this a baseline number? I mean, if the community wanted this lowered and wanted less maintenance, is that an option also?
The community can ask for that, but, uh, essentially, this maintenance is, uh, something that was agreed to many years ago. And this maintenance for the benefit of the entire city.
Sure, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, again, a, a direction of council, uh, I certainly could review, um, what other options there may be for, uh, either streamlining the process or, um, determining if there's, uh, you know, some other authority that the city can look at for modifying these assessments. But, um, you know, essentially, this was a deal that was. But, you know, essentially this was a deal that was struck many years ago and some of the residents, you know, weren't part of that deal. They bought into the community, you know, with this deal already. And it's understandable that there's questions.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Heller, was that same questions for both eight and nine?
Yes, I wanted to say that I had the same questions for the other items so we can move on to A12, I believe it is.
Okay.
So the question I had on this has to do with, this issue of reimbursement from Cal OES for COVID-19 expenses. And identify certain costs that are reimbursable costs. And I'm just wondering if there's someone on the line here who can educate me as to what certain costs, examples of what certain costs might be. And what, what are the staff's expectation in terms of the percent that's going to be reimbursed from Cal OES?
Yeah, this is Scott speaking here, City Manager Scott Collins. Our understanding is it's pretty limited in terms of the eligibility of costs, that it would be primarily overtime costs related to COVID-19 activities as well as the purchase of materials, equipments, et cetera, that is primarily for COVID-19. So that would not include the time of your city manager who's spent pretty much every working hour on the pandemic. Those costs would not be reimbursable. But if we had overtime related to police or fire, some other public safety activity, those costs could be reimbursable as well as stuff that we purchased for that. And typically FEMA reimburses 75%. And then Cal OES can reimburse almost the remainder. They usually work in part and parcel. And we don't know what to anticipate in terms of the timeline for reimbursement. Sometimes it can take a year or two depending on the emergency and the level of, just the level of activity related to the emergency and just the amount of auditing that is required. But because so many cities have declared emergencies, it may take a significant amount of time for FEMA and Cal OES to process these reimbursement requests. I hope that helps.
That's, that's very good information. That's exactly the kind of information I wanted. So thank you for that.
Councilman, I could elaborate on some of the specific categories that FEMA provides reimbursement for. It's actually FEMA, depending on the type of emergency, has a number of categories. And this is a category B emergency. And some of the costs that they're going to reimburse are training specific to the pandemic, disinfection of eligible public facilities, technical assistance to local governments on emergency management and control, purchase and distribution of food, water, medicine, other consumable supplies, communication of general health and safety information to the public. There are other items on the list, but essentially what's going to happen is that the city will get on the phone or do Zoom with state officials and provide a list of all of the different costs that the city believes are eligible based upon the criteria. And then there'll be a discussion on how much reimbursement will be provided. And for what it's worth, large cities are dealing directly with the federal government. By large, I mean over 500,000 people. You know, smaller cities, basically most cities in California, have to go through the state government who is distributing the FEMA resources. And right now Congress is considering another emergency relief bill to provide aid directly to smaller communities, which would be of huge benefit to Morro Bay and frankly, most of the cities in California.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that clarification as well. As part of this issue and based on what your comments just were a moment ago, Mr. Mayor, can you tell me, do you know what the county is doing or what the city can do to speak up regarding, you know, all of us, so many cities in California or counties are under 500,000 people? Can you, do you have any information for us on that? Can I hear you?
Yeah, sir. I, I do. I don't know if it's as detailed as we would like it to be. However, I've been in contact with Congressman Carver Hall and Assemblyman Cunningham, who, and Senator Manning as well, who are very well aware of the issue for the counties that they represent and the concern that we have regarding the fact that we will be at the, my, my word, mercy of the state for federal monies that will come that apply to communities that are, or counties that are 500,000 population or less. And so we have advocated, I have advocated for inclusion of counties below that number and that the reimbursement come from the government directly. We have, Mr. Collins and I have a, a call with Congressman Carver Hall and his staff this week to further discuss. He's asked for a list of the kind of things and the impacts that the city will incur potentially as a result of COVID-19 and is working very feverishly to try to, to bring that point home with regard to our communities. So right now, we don't know exactly what the mechanism is going to be from the state, if it remains as it is. But we're advocating for direct support federally from the federal government for counties that are smaller like ours.
That's great. That's great information. What should the average resident do? Can they help write letters to Mr. Carver Hall or what do you suggest?
To Congressman Carver Hall? And you can go to his website and he is trying to collect as many stories with regard to the impacts and why there is a need for communities and counties of our size to receive direct reimbursement. In fact, there's probably a greater need for smaller communities like ours that have a single economic engine, basically tourism. And that will be hit very hard. And so please, I would encourage anybody out there to advocate directly with the congressman to assist.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Yeah, I did a little research on this and of the 58 counties in California, 41 have populations of less than 500,000 people. So there are a lot of us that are going to be really affected if some funds don't come quickly to us. So.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of A8, 9, and 12.
I'll move to approve A8, 9, and 12.
Hey, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. A motion for approval by Councilmember Addis of A8, 9, and 12. Second by Councilmember Heller and roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. That brings us to item C-1. This is consideration of resolution number 32-20 to join the San Luis Obispo Countywide Regional Compact on Housing. And I will turn it over to Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to get the video running here. Okay, great. Yes, thank you, Council Mayor and community members watching. I just wanted to tee up this conversation for our guest speaker here who's presenting on behalf of all the county and all the seven cities. This is consideration of resolution number 32-20 to join the San Luis Obispo County Regional Compact on Housing. We recommend that city council receive the presentation from Carolyn Berg of the Chief Administrative Office at the County of Slow, who's serving as the coordinator for this regional housing effort that kicked off last year. And outside of the presentation, adopt the resolution number 32-20 approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the San Luis Obispo Countywide Regional Compact on Housing. Carolyn can provide the background and discussion. And the resolution was attached to the, the staff reports. And the other cities in the county of all unanimously approved, authorizing their mayors to sign this. And I believe the county supervisors also approved this. And this is, again, sort of all the cities in the county working together to address one of the more pressing challenges facing our community and really the entire state of California around affordable housing. There was a lot of effort and steam behind this and then we ran into the COVID pandemic. So this has obviously taken a backseat to that more pressing emergency. But nonetheless, the housing issue is still relevant and problematic and challenging. And we need to work together to help solve, solve this issue. So with that, I will turn it over to Carolyn, who has a presentation. Her laptop may not work on the audio side. She's warned me ahead of time. So she may have to call in on her phone, but it sounds like I can hear her laughing. So that's a good sign. And I'll let Carolyn take it away from here.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Heding. Thank you, councilmembers and Mr. Collins. And again, I'm Carolyn Berg with the County Administrative Office and just really appreciate you taking the time to, to talk about this tonight and consider kind of the culmination of a long-term effort that's been happening. As Mr. Collins mentioned, I've been working on this for the better part of the last year, but with a lot of other leaders, including Mr. Collins and all of the other city managers, county administrators, and electeds throughout the region, along with a lot of stakeholders. And as Mr. Collins mentioned, I'm, I am actually in our county emergency operations center currently. So I'm well aware that, you know, we obviously had a lot of momentum and a lot of work building into this over the last year. And I'm very sensitive to the fact that we're in the midst of the COVID crisis and are rightfully so. I think all of us are really focused on immediate relief and the well-being of our communities and businesses, you know, throughout this, the duration of this. And as I kind of struggled with how to pull together talking points, given where we are today versus where we were two months ago. You know, it really struck me that this regional compact we're talking about is, it's still critical. I mean, much like the, the water reclamation facility you're pursuing, there are these longer term efforts that are still critical to the well-being of each of our communities and the overall region. And I think in particular, this item I'll walk you through, it's really marking the culmination of, of a significant amount of collaboration. And I think when we're going through a trying time like we are under the stresses of COVID, I think the key themes within our regional compact are very relevant. You know, we're very focused on unity and this idea of partnership and coming together, which is critical more than ever when we're trying to lift each other up and come through hard times. So with that, I thank Mr. Collins and Mr. Graham and Mr. Livik, who've been really helpful in working on this effort. And also I know I was able to speak with your council in the fall timeframe. And I know you've been taking a lot of leadership as it comes to long-term housing planning and, and also looking to your community's long-term infrastructure needs. So with that, I'm going to share, let's see if I can share my presentation. And, all right, can you all see that? Okay. And you'll see the painting I chose was for Morro Rocks. So in your honor. Okay. So as I said, you know, this is still relevant. I think more than ever today, we're really, it's not that COVID did anything to alleviate any of the needs and pressures. It's actually just really highlighting some of our needs around affordability and the access to jobs and economic resiliency that is needed. Also, a lot of our communities are facing the struggle of having housing that's affordable to our residents and workforce. And then, of course, all of our communities have varying degrees of need around our water and wastewater and transportation systems in terms of making sure that we're ready to serve today's communities, but also looking out into our, our future communities' needs. And of course, as we see and has come up a few times on today's council meeting, there's an added layer of complexity with the pressures of state and federal requirements and funding programs. So these are a lot of the things that each of our agencies and communities is balancing every day and often are something we hold in common. And when we're talking about housing, often as I work with all of the city managers, it's not part of looking ahead, it's also looking back to see how we've done in the past. And so as your city council and communities are aware, we work with the state every four to eight years through what's called a regional housing needs allocation cycle, ORINA. And essentially what the state does is they look at the projected population growth needs of an area and what they assume the income levels of that community will be. And then they look to that region and each of the individual cities and communities to require how many units and at what income categories we need to plan for. So during the last cycle, just in terms of looking back, we were looking at a four-year time period and our region was tasked with planning for a little over 4,000 new housing units and over half of those being in the affordable housing range. When we looked at the actual built housing units through council of government staff, we saw that we actually built over 4,500 housing units. So we exceeded the overall requirement, but more than 70% of those were within the market rate or above moderate. So really starts to challenge that affordability category for our residents and whether or not they have access to housing. So when we look ahead at the next state mandated housing needs allocation, we're looking at an eight-year time horizon through 2028. And our region's been tasked with planning for 10,810 new units. And that's spread, as you can see on this pie chart, across all seven cities in the unincorporated area. So each of our agencies are, of course, required to plan for whatever they've been handed. But what became clear to all of us is, you know, given what we've seen in the past housing cycles and just what our residents felt experiences, you know, we really need to find some new creative path together if we're going to actually achieve this affordable housing. And so that really, as Mr. Collins pointed out, initiated this, what we're calling the Regional Infrastructure and Affordable Housing Strategic Action Plan. So in early 2019, the county board put me into a new position to help work with all of your agencies and across the region stakeholders to try to come up with a way to integrate each of the local agencies' efforts and come up with a good partnership and means of collaborating to develop a strategic action plan that essentially looks at what are all of the water, wastewater, and transportation needs to support our communities as it grows? And what are the housing needs of our area? And then how do we prioritize across the many needs looking ahead? And start to identify funding or implementation strategies that we could work together on? And then finally, in working with Mr. Graham and others, we're also looking for, you know, what are the land use planning side of this that would actually open up the ability to successfully implement an action plan through housing elements and others? But tonight's action is really focused on that first initial phase. It's really about setting a vision and solidifying our collaborative effort through this regional compact. And so this is really serving as our first major step. And it took the leadership of Mr. Collins and the other city managers, our county administrator and the council of governments to help me understand what each of your individual communities' needs were and help us come up with, you know, what are some, a common vision of what we're trying to achieve and some goals that help to meet not only your community's needs, but the others? And so essentially, the Countywide Regional Compact establishes a united regional framework to unlock our potential to develop an adequate supply of housing and resilient infrastructure that supports our economic prosperity. And there's six individual goals that you can see attached to the resolution tonight. The first one is, it's really broad and focused. It's talking about strengthening our community quality of life and recognizing that that's really founded on having a good infrastructure and resource system to support our needs, adequate housing supply, economic prosperity, and, and also providing opportunities for our residents to be trained and given the opportunity to work in jobs in our area. And we have shared regional prosperity, which really looks at recognizing that all of our communities are better off if, if we work as a region and can help to support one another through both the impacts and benefits of pursuing and achieving that quality of life. Then we have creating balanced communities. And this one's really focused on more of the jobs-housing balance. So some communities have a lot more jobs in place, others have more housing. How do we bring those into balance and try to make sure that those living throughout our region have access to, to, to jobs, which I think is being highlighted right now? And then, of course, our area, which your city knows, you know, above many of us, but there's a value to our agricultural, natural resources. There's an abundance of beautiful open land. There's an abundance of beautiful open land and rich agricultural heritage that we also want to maintain as we plan for the long-term needs of our region. And then these last two goals are more focused on housing policies, and so this is supporting equitable and diverse opportunities, so really setting a vision for wanting to have a diverse set of housing across all income levels and accessible to people across all walks of life. And then the last one is fostering accelerated housing production, which is really setting a tone for our staffs across all the agencies to look for policies and actions that we can take to streamline process and really try to make our systems work better. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, I think it's important to note this is aspirational in nature. It's really just, again, setting that vision and saying that all of our agencies do want to work together as partners and kind of unify our efforts across those goals. And hopefully, this even helps us as we start to pursue some of the different stimulus package funding for infrastructure and other things moving forward. But it's just the first step of many, and so I've been really pleased, as Mr. Collins said, with the support so far. We've, starting in late February, the county board approved this, and then we've been to each of the city councils and the council of government. And then we're here tonight. You're our final, and wonderful city of Morro Bay will be considering it. And then at some point in the future, we'll take a moment to have everyone come together and post shelter at home and sign this and just look to the future together. Of course, this will build into future actions. As I said, this really just helps to set a direction for your leadership at the city and for staff as we start to then work on the details of a strategic action plan and work on different ways of uniting our housing elements throughout the rest of 2020 and just including different regional aspects into both of those documents, which would then come back to your city council for consideration in the future. And so with that, I believe as Mr. Collins said, you're being asked to consider adopting the resolution and approving and authorizing the mayor to sign this regional compact. Thank you.
Carolyn, thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you for being available to present to the mayor's council when we met a number of months ago. We were looking forward to this coming forward, and it's great to have you here. Appreciate that. I'm going to open it up for any council member questions that they may have. So council member Davis, any questions?
I do not have any questions. I think this is a great first step.
Thank you. Council member Addis.
I don't have any questions. I'm excited to see this. I think that Morro Bay, it's going to be very good for Morro Bay to join with other cities in the county across the region and have a partnership as we address this. I think it's, I think it's a huge benefit to Morro Bay to work in partnership.
Great, thank you. Council member McPherson.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. I just have one question. Do you have a timeline for the development of the strategic plan? Any sense of when we would be seeing that?
Well, my pre-COVID world would have said that we were aiming to the end of 2020. I think that'll be delayed a bit, as Ms. Crawford and Mr. Collins pointed out earlier. I'm currently helping with the economic relief and recovery efforts regionwide, but I'm thinking probably within the first quarter of 2021, depending on, you know, how conditions go over the coming weeks with COVID. But certainly, I'm trying not to lose sight of where we're headed, and I think for the housing elements and the underlying collaboration we've been doing with Mr. Graham there, those, as far as I know, are still mandated by the state to be done by the end of the year. So I think our collaborative efforts around the land use policies and work together will come back to you by the end of the year. But the strategic action plan, I'm thinking, would be in the earlier part of 2021 at this point.
Great, thank you. Well, we certainly look forward to it, and thank you for doing this.
Thank you. And council member Heller, any questions, sir?
Yes, Carolyn, thank you so much for your presentation. Thanks for joining us this evening. I really, really appreciate you spending the time on this. As I look at this, is this, is this, so the Board of Supervisors has basically organized this group, and does this have to do with our, kind of our inability to meet the RENA quotas that we're supposed to be meeting in terms of allocation?
Yeah, I think that's really what really spurred on this effort, was just the challenge we saw even before we had the new regional allocation set down. And I think it's also just the experience of, I think, what we're all seeing with the affordability and lack of housing supply available to our residents. So I think a little bit of both, and Mr. Collins may have other things to add from before my time on the project, but I believe RENA was a big part of what drove this.
Okay. So it's been described as being aspirational, and I think aspiration is wonderful, but what will this compact have in terms of authority if, for example, we get into some kind of a competitive situation with one of our other cities in the county regarding pursuing funding, et cetera? I mean, is that something you plan to deal with, or how would you deal with that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So it is aspirational. It was really an inviting to the table of all of us and collectively, especially at the elective and community level, agreeing that these goals matter to all of us. But what we've talked about and how it's solidified is in that strategic action plan. That's where we would be laying out, you know, here are the priorities that we all agree upon and kind of our way of coming at determining those. And then to the extent there are grant funding we're pursuing together, you know, I would envision there may be interagency agreements or things like that that are set up that are perhaps have more teeth behind them. I can think of a better word, but just something that really holds us accountable. But at this point, there wasn't anything substantive enough to put in front of each council that would have probably felt comfortable for you to sign off on. So I think those are future actions and definitely something we're keeping an eye on for how we want to pursue that.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment and ask AGP, do we have anybody in the queue for this item?
Yes, sir, we have three. Caller, you are live.
All right. Go ahead.
Hello, caller, you are live. We can hear you.
Yes, this is Betty Winholz. I'd like to know if there is, in a sense, an escape hatch? Is there any way for, once this is all signed, that one agency can back, agency being city, back out when the others don't, like they did with the animal services, when they were proposing to work together on that and then PASL backed out and stalled it for two years? Is there a exit exam, exit process for this? Or are we all in it together? And what if one city gets voted overruled by the other cities? How is that handled?
Thank you, Betty.
That's the end of my comment.
Thank you. AGP, is there a second in the queue?
Yes, caller, you are live.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, this is Dan Sealy from Morro Bay. I have two concerns about joining this countywide group. My first question is, if we join, is this a binding agreement as to the aspirations of this group? If there's a city that decides to give, say, low-cost housing purchasers a 50% cut, whereas other cities don't feel like they can afford that, are they stuck to this compact or are they able to say, that's more than we can afford? That's my first question. My second question is, is this low-cost housing, is it coming at an expense to current residents? Or how is it funded? I'm concerned that cities are not taxing current residents in one way or another to pay for low-cost housing. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. AGP, do we have a third caller?
Yes, sir, just a moment.
Thank you.
Caller, you are live.
Sorry, I called back again because the web service is down. I've already had my public comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comments, AGP?
No, sir.
With that, I will close public comment and ask Mr. Collins or Carolyn if you could comment on the issue with regard to can an agency back out? What's the exit process?
Yeah, this isn't, I mean, I understand the question and pointing to the animal services agreement. That's actually a joint powers agreement, which is, I think, a little bit different than what we're talking about here, which is more of a, you know, aspirational sort of high-level guideline document that, you know, as Carolyn said, there isn't teeth to it. It's simply saying, these are the high-reaching goals that we want to aspire to, and then, you know, it sets the stage for some potential future agreements or other work product to help accomplish some of those goals. But ultimately, it's sort of like the CODIS ability that was shared with all the cities in the county after a visit that that group did out to Denver, Colorado. It's not binding, but it sort of sets the tone and tenor for addressing this issue that we need to take a regional approach versus a siloed city-by-city approach, because there may be opportunities in the future where some cities may be able to take in additional housing, and then the cities could work collaboratively to make sure that infrastructure dollars are made available for that, for that type of development. Because in some cases, it might not work, and the way that RENA has drawn up may not work. The way, it worked for each individual city as best as it could if it was done from a regional standpoint. So this is just the beginning of that process. If cities decide that housing is no longer a salient issue and don't want to work with the partnering agencies, they can certainly do that, but that's certainly not the approach that we've seen with the councils and the city managers and the Board of Supervisors and the C A L. I don't know if Carolyn wants to add to that.
No, I think that's exactly right. I think until you have details in front of you, the intent is to continue finding a path forward that all of our communities and councils and boards can unite around. But until you have that detail, certainly, this wasn't intended to be the document with the bite behind it. This is just a coming together and setting that vision. And then as for the funding of it, I think that's part of what I'll be exploring this year with all of your staff and partners, are what types of funding, to Dan's questions, are out there and accessible in terms of stimulus funding in this current environment, but also looking at other opportunities for low-interest rate funds or different ways of prioritizing where existing regional funds are channeled towards to help with either housing or infrastructure needs? So not necessarily creating a new tax base or something like that for existing residents. So it's more about looking at what's out there as opportunities and how we can open up those federal or state funds for the most part.
Yeah, and add on to that, you know, there's the block grants established by the federal government that could be utilized for housing. That wouldn't add to the tax base. The former redevelopment agencies in the state of California were the primary affordable housing development arm for cities and counties. That was dissolved by the governor in 2012. So cities have really had no real true access to affordable housing funds, and it's been primarily through piecemealing and housing in lieu, or affordable housing in lieu ordinances and the like to build up enough to maybe purchase from developers some affordable housing units. But it's very patchwork and piecemealed, and I think Carolyn's right that there may be opportunities through stimulus at the state or federal level to help inject affordable housing dollars into the county, and that's sort of our best bet at this point.
Great, thank you both. Thank you, Carolyn, for being with us virtually tonight. I really appreciate that. I want to thank Mr. Collins and Mr. Graham and Mr. Leibig for working to effectuate this. I'll go ahead and lead off. I do believe that the regional compact is an important, you know, first step that will help to protect and enhance the region's communities, also assist in building infrastructure that's critical, enhance or protect our natural resources, and really create a collaborative forward-thinking initiative on the part of all of the communities that signed this. With that, I will go ahead and move approval of number, resolution number 32-20, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the San Luis Obispo Countywide Regional Compact on Housing.
I'll second.
I second.
Motion by Mayor Heding for staff recommendation, second by council member Addis. And is there any further discussion?
Yes, council member Davis.
Yes.
Council member Addis and I met with supervisor Gibson about a year ago because we wanted to find out what we could do as a city to help move forward more affordable housing. And we left that meeting with not a real clear picture of how to do that, working strictly ourselves as a city. So the collaborative approach, I think, is exactly the right way to move this forward. What we have before us is a vision, and every goal starts with a vision, and I'm just excited to vote for this and to continue the efforts that council member Addis and I started a year ago.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that.
Great, thank both for that early work. Any other comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heding.
Yes.
Council member Addis.
Yes.
Council member Davis.
Yes.
Council member Heller.
Yes.
And council member McPherson.
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Great, thank you. That takes us to agenda item number C2, adoption of resolution number 33-20 regarding publication of emergency orders on evictions, foreclosures, and price gouging. And I will turn it over to Mr. Niermeyer, our attorney, city attorney, Chris.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight you have before you Resolution 3320 regarding publication of emergency orders on evictions, foreclosures, and price gouging due to the COVID-19 state of emergency. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution. There's no immediate fiscal impact to the city. As a matter of brief background, as I'm sure everyone's aware, there was an outbreak of COVID-19, a respiratory illness, back in December 2019 in Asia. It has since spread to around the world. And at this point, as of April 14th, the CDC reports that over half a million Americans have COVID-19, and there's been over 22,000 deaths. The California governor on March 4th declared a state of emergency to exist in California. The President of the United States followed up on March 13th with the same for the nation. Likewise, on the same date, the county declared a countywide emergency, and City of Morro Bay declared an emergency on March 14th, and that was ratified by the city council on March 19th. Because of these emergency conditions, especially the shelter order, shelter-at-home orders, and that a lot of businesses have shut down, many people are experiencing or will experience substantial loss of income as a result of business closures, the loss of hours or wages or layoffs related to the COVID-19 epidemic, and this will hinder the ability to keep up with rent or to make mortgage payments, potentially leaving folks vulnerable to eviction or foreclosure. At the same time, consumers seeking to purchase medical and emergency supplies, as well as food and consumer goods, may face unscrupulous price gouging or profiteering. In response to these concerns, there have been a number of orders issued in the state of California that address these matters, and the council is being asked to consider approving a resolution to publish these emergency rules, orders, and regulations. And I'll briefly go through those. The first one, concerning eviction relief and eviction moratorium. The executive order N3720 from the governor issued on March 27th. It prohibits the enforcement of residential eviction orders for renters affected by the COVID-19 pandemic through May 31st. It's important to note that in the governor's order, the renter must inform the landlord in writing within seven days of the rent being due if it can't be paid due to specified COVID-19 reasons. For example, you lost your job because of the business shutdown. For example, you lost your job because of the business shutdowns. Perhaps more importantly, on April 6, 2020, the California Judicial Council issued emergency rule number one, which is largely unprecedented in the history of the state of California, where the courts basically suspended virtually all legal action for evictions, and they have suspended the issuance of summons for evictions or unlawful detainers, and the entry of defaults for evictions or unlawful detainers. And the court has said that the Supreme Judicial Council of California has said that this will be in effect until the end of the state of emergency and 90 days thereafter. So this should reasonably be in effect until summer. This does not alleviate individuals from the duty to pay rent. It's just that you cannot have the legal machinery start up to have someone evicted while this is in effect. There can still be evictions for health and safety reasons, for example, if there is a public nuisance at a property. So that is a significant statewide order. As for mortgage relief and judicial foreclosure, the governor secured agreement on March 25, 2020 from many major financial institutions, not all of them, but many of them, to provide mortgage payment forbearances of up to 90 days to borrowers that can demonstrate they've been economically impacted by COVID-19. And because it's not all banks, but it's most banks, if a mortgage holder is interested in this relief, they're encouraged to contact their bank to see if they're offering this, or they can contact the state of California to get a list of the banks and the details. Also, the California Judicial Council issued emergency rule number two, which stays court proceedings on judicial foreclosure actions. Now, this doesn't stop all foreclosures, it stops judicial foreclosure actions. Many foreclosures are not done through the courts, but for the ones that are, the courts are not going to process them again through the existence of the statewide emergency and for 90 days thereafter, unless it's amended. And third, when it comes to price gouging or profiteering, the penal code already prohibits price gouging and profiteering during a state of emergency, which basically means that prices can't be raised by more than 10% from the pre-crisis price unless one can show that there is an increase in labor costs or supply costs, but you just can't raise the price because there's a much greater demand. The governor's actually strengthened that price gouging penal code rule by providing that the price that's the benchmark is going to be going back to February 4 rather than March 4. And also, it's going to be the law of the land until September 4. So essentially, if prices are 10% or greater than they were before the emergency, and that price is not due to increased supply or labor costs, basically on the merchant side, then it's unlawful to raise them that much. So what staff's recommending is that council adopt Resolution 3320 and provide other directions deemed appropriate. And what this resolution does is it will publicize these emergency orders relating to evictions, foreclosures, and price gouging. I'm available for any questions that a council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate the presentation. With that, Councilmember McPherson, any questions?
Just one. How would you recommend that the city publish publish these orders?
I think that for sure, this should be put on the city's website, where there's a lot of other COVID-19 information provided. And then, as for whether it's going to be disseminated to the residents through any other methods, I would leave that to staff to determine what would be the best way, given current resources.
Staff want to weigh in?
Any other, another question?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Other comments?
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've just, she was asking about the other staff comments.
No, I was just wondering if the other staff had any thoughts on it, that they wanted to contribute.
Right, that's, that's, yes, that's. And no other thoughts? No other thoughts, okay.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Heller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, can you, can you explain to me, we've got executive orders from the governor, and then we have the California Judicial Judicial Council's rules being issued. Does one take precedence over the other, or you said it's very unusual for the Judicial Council to even issue an emergency order or rule?
Yeah, the Judicial Council sets the rules for California courts. And so what they've essentially done is said that any court process is frozen until the emergency is over and 90 days thereafter. So if a landlord wanted to file the legal paperwork to process an eviction, the courts just won't do anything with it unless it's a self, unless it's a public health or safety reason. And so the Judicial Council, my understanding, took this action because notwithstanding the governor's orders, there were a number of landlords that were still serving eviction notices, and in some counties, there were sheriffs that were still serving notices on renters. But now the court is basically saying, we're not going to issue any of the legal paperwork. And so individuals just simply will not have to engage in the legal process for the state of the emergency. I need to point out that the the rents still due, but it's not going to be due until after the emergency and 90 days thereafter. And so for the Judicial Council to basically trim back court rules is largely an unprecedented situation. Of course, on the heels of multiple executive orders from the governor, I guess it's the new normal, but it's very unusual to trim back court rules like this.
So it seems to me like the Judicial Council emergency rules kind of override the the executive orders from the governor. Is that fair to say, or are they complimentary, or?
Judicial Council order actually is in effect for 90 days after the state of the emergency is lifted, versus the governor's order had only had a limited duration that it was going to be in effect for. But the big difference is that the governor's order said that eviction orders should not be enforced. They could still be processed, and they could still be basically issued by the courts. And so unfortunately, from what I've read, is that a number of unscrupulous landlords have basically done everything that they can to try to get renters out during the crisis when they don't have the lawful ability to enforce those evictions. And so the Judicial Council has just said the courts will stop issuing this paperwork.
Okay. Now, there's basically three components to this, and I've got a couple of questions. Eviction relief, so it looked like in the governor's executive order, it applied to residential properties only. Does the Judicial Council's emergency rule number one address commercial and residential properties, or it seemed unclear to me?
That's a really good question. So the governor's order clearly applied only to residential, and the Judicial Council order basically suspended the rules for all evictions. And so the presumption is, is that it's for both residential and commercial.
Okay. Let's see here. Mortgage relief, you talked a little bit about judicial foreclosure versus bank repossession, and I think the staff report said that bank judicial foreclosures are less common than bank repossessions. Can you explain the differences between the two, and is this somewhat some kind of a loophole, perhaps?
Thank you for calling Call-In Studios, host and call screener line. Please enter your show number and press pound.
Did I do that?
Yeah.
What did I do?
No, you didn't do that. Got a question, Chris? That's okay. We can see it.
No, that wasn't me. No, the difference is, is that a lot of banks issue mortgages under a contract that simply says that if you don't make the payments, then they automatically take title to the property, as opposed to some mortgages require court action for they can take title. Unfortunately, most mortgages are of the type where automatically, if payments aren't made for X amount of days, then title just switches over to the bank. But for those that require judicial foreclosure, this will stem those. As for the ones that do not require court action for foreclosure to occur, definitely I would suggest that any of those mortgage holders see if their banks are the ones that are providing the forbearances.
Okay, and then, do you have any idea what percentage of mortgages are subject to bank repossession?
I believe the majority of them are.
So is this really giving much protection to those mortgage holders?
For the foreclosure, judicial foreclosure moratorium, I believe that a majority of mortgage holders would not be able to take the benefit of this moratorium. They would need to rely upon their banks actually allowing that during forbearance. Okay, that's a very good point.
Okay. The last piece, which is price gouging and and profiteering, you hear different stories about this going on, but in general, in terms of our community, what would be the enforcement mechanism, or who would we look to if we found that there was some profiteering going on somewhere?
Well, the first step would be to could contact the city, and the city itself could enforce the price gouging profiteering rules pursuant to the authority of issuing administrative fines for up to $1,000, which is what the city had done before. And also, they could be enforced criminally as misdemeanors. Also, the district attorney's office can be contacted as well. I would suggest that if there was an issue, it would probably be more realistic to rely upon the district attorney's office to enforce it, given they have much greater resources for prosecution. But certainly, the city could be contacted and code enforcement or the police department could look into the matter.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, any questions?
No, I do not have any questions. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Addis.
Yeah, just a couple, and I'm sorry if you said this and I missed it. We had quite a bit of correspondence asking for a council to write a letter to the governor to request a rent freeze and mortgage moratorium. And I understand that this item doesn't cover that, but in that correspondence, one of the people said to me that they were afraid to ask for the, what am I trying to say here? They were afraid to ask for help in not paying their rent this week or this month because they felt that when the moratorium was over, that then their landlord was either going to raise their rent or or ask them to move. So they were afraid to ask for help even at this level.
Please enter your show number and press pound.
That's not me.
Is that me? I don't think so.
Chris, did you respond to that?
So is there, what do people do, like if, you know, they know they can't pay their rent, they're supposed to give five days or seven days notice, but they're afraid to give that notice that they can't pay because they think if they ask for those concessions now, that their landlord's going to raise the rent later or or try to evict them later when the when this is lifted.
Well, that would all depend upon the terms of the lease. You know, I can't speak just broadly on what a landlord would or would not do.
This person has a month to month lease, that the big concern, and it it kind of all came out when we received this slew of of requests that we, as a council, write a letter to request the rent freeze and mortgage moratorium. The concern was from folks that are on month to month leases, that if they request this help with their rent, then when they're, you know, when it's lifted, that they'll just get evicted or punished with higher rent. And is, I guess I'm just wondering, is there any recourse for them? And if so, what agency would they contact? Does anybody know?
Well, again, if the landlord violates the lease terms or engages in some type of unlawful retaliation, then there would be a remedy. You know, I've reviewed thoroughly the governor's orders and Judicial Council's orders and, you know, the different actions the state has taken, and by no means are they providing perfect relief to renters. You know, that's clear. And I really can't speak to, you know, specific landlord tenant situations without reviewing the lease and the history of the tenancy and whatnot. You know, the relief that's available now is that evictions just simply are not supposed to be processed for quite a period of time. It should be through the summer. I would predict that come summertime, you know, if individuals have not been able to pay their rent, and they can't, you know, they can't come through and pay the full rent come summertime, we're going to have another issue. And, you know, I, I don't know how that's going to play out, but that's a legitimate concern.
Okay, so they would, am I hearing there's, there's already ways that somebody could follow up if they felt like their landlord was taking retaliation against them for some for something? Just in general, that already exists.
Well, right now, there should not be any evictions that are being processed through the duration of the emergency and 90 days thereafter. So, you know, there is a temporary pause, if you will, on inability to evict anyone except for health and safety reasons. You know, what's going to happen when that period ends? You know, I don't know. I'm assuming that if the tenants aren't able to pay their rent in full or reach an agreement with their landlords, then we're going to have another situation to deal with in the summer or to address in the summer. You know, so I don't know, but to put a halt on evictions being processed, it's it's unprecedented. And part of why the mortgage relief was provided was because my understanding is that a lot of the property owners were concerned about not being able to pay their mortgages if they aren't getting the rent from their tenants. And so it was meant to be a somewhat comprehensive approach where if the property owners aren't getting their rent for some time, and they can't pay their mortgages, then they should also get relief. So it's essentially something that's supposed to put the situation on hold for a few months, and I would like to think that the state of California would be addressing this issue in the months to come.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. A G P, do we have anybody in the queue?
Yes, sir, we have two in the queue. I'll pull them up.
Thank you.
Okay, caller, you are online.
No, sorry, again, I keep getting disconnected. My public comment, thank you.
Hello? Anybody there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've been getting some texts from residents saying that the connection has been cut off completely, and they're trying to call in but are not able to, so I'll just pass that along.
Thank you. Let me maybe just take this opportunity to give the proper number again. One eight one eight seven nine four seven zero zero four. The show number is number two six zero seven. The guest pin is number four six four one nine two. Take a minute there. A G P, anybody on the line?
Yes, sir, I will try again.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody bearing with with these new technological challenges.
Hello, caller?
Hello?
Yeah. It doesn't sound like.
We need 5G. We need 5G.
Maybe could I ask everybody to mute except for me? Maybe that'll help. I don't know if there's background noise or what, but A G P, can you keep one on hold and go to the second call?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
All right, caller.
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, uh huh.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan Sebby from Morro Bay. First, first and foremost, is is now the phone call-in system is failing. It's cutting us off, it's not letting us in, it's greatly distorted. And so now the public has been stopped almost entirely from commenting. I'm really surprised that I got through right now, and I'm grateful that I have, but I'm just informing you that the majority of the public is just informing you that the majority of the public is not any longer able to comment unless they redial, 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 redial and hope for a connection such as I have. Several members of the community have called me asking me what to do and I've only suggested to them doing what I'm doing, hoping that it will work. But I ask that you consider under the Brown Act suspending the meeting because the public is not, is being cut off from not only observing the meeting, but commenting on the meeting as well, which I believe to be a violation of the Brown Act. And that's my first request, that I ask that you respond to it. That's my primary concern right now. I have other issues concerning C2, but I believe, I believe the public's participation takes precedence and priority and we're being thwarted to a major degree right now. That's all.
Thank you. AGP, do you have another call?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Caller, you are live?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, please.
This is Betty Winholz, and I have to tell you, since I've been offline for about 15 minutes, I don't know where you are in the agenda.
Item C2.
Our phones got cut off just suddenly and I don't know where we are, what item you're on and what I can respond to.
I just said item C2, Ms. Winholz. Could you hear me?
Oh, now I can. I did not before. So you're on C2, which is the housing one? No, no, you did the housing. So now you're on the emergency?
We're on the resolution regarding publication of emergency orders on evictions, foreclosures, and price gouging.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Of course, I would support that and thank you for that.
Okay, you bet. Thank you. AGP, other callers?
No, sir. There are no other callers at this time.
Okay. So I will apologize. Sometimes with technology, there are difficulties. However, at this time, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion or recommendation.
I will-
I'll move that way.
I will move that the council adopt resolution number 33-20 regarding publication of emergency orders on evictions, foreclosures, and price gouging related to the COVID-19 state of emergency.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember McPherson, a second by Councilmember Addis to adopt resolution number 3320 regarding publication of emergency orders on eviction, foreclosures, and price gouging. With that, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think this is really an excellent item. My primary concern at this point is what appears to be kind of a loophole in terms of bank repossession for mortgage holders. I'm not sure how to address that or how we should respond, but it looks like a significant issue that could potentially lead to rampant bank repossession of properties, if I'm reading this right. And I'm just wondering what the council's thoughts are on this and what your thoughts are on this, Mr. Mayor?
Chris, did you want to comment on that? Is there a loophole with regarding bank repossession that might lead to rampant foreclosures? I think that the issue is, and it's a really important one, is that what the state has done at this point has largely not interfered with private contractual agreements. The state has put a hold on rent that's due, but it still will be due at some point. And then the courts have said, we're not going to process a number of judicial items. We're gonna wait on those. In regards to the state stepping in and basically interfering with a private, private contract, certainly the state of California could do that, but the consequences would be greater. The point is, is that certainly, you know, council could advocate to the state of California to take a stronger position on this. But I understand why the state of California has not gone that far yet because the state has taken actions that don't involve basically breaking private contracts. But it certainly is a concern and I would agree with Councilman Heller that this does leave a lot of mortgage holders subject to repossession. I would say that for those that are subject to that, they certainly should determine whether or not their bank is one of the financial institutions that Governor Newsom has reached an agreement with on forbearances. My understanding is most banks have actually entered into that agreement with the governor. So there should be relief for most mortgage holders. It's just that you need to check whether your bank is one of the ones that have agreed with Governor Newsom to do forbearances for the time being.
Okay, thank you. That's a really good answer. The other question that kind of comes to me is what about those folks that have mortgages that are not with one of those major banks? What would you suggest we tell them?
At this point, they don't fall under these executive orders. And I would suggest that they should, I imagine, call their bank and ask if they can work out some new arrangement, work out something to deal with the COVID emergency. I do agree that this doesn't cover everybody and, you know, I was hoping to make clear in the staff report that, you know, there are some exceptions to this executive order. And I don't have a great answer for folks that fall into that area. At this point, the state of California has not done anything specifically to address the folks that are in that category.
Well, your staff report was excellent. So thank you for bringing forth the detail that is necessary, I think, on a very important issue. So thank you for that. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Great question. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. That brings us to item C-3.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me. Could I request a biology break here? I'm kind of over hydrated today.
Biofluid break, absolutely, sir. I have 8:06. Why don't we reconvene in front of the camera at about 8:10?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We'll be right back, folks.
We will take a short break.
Ready to go? AGP?
Yes, sir. We are rolling.
Thank you. So we are back and we are on item number C-3. Approval of consultant agreement for implementation of the first phase of the Morro Bay One Water Plan, water and wastewater, and authorization for the city manager to sign the agreement. With that, I will turn it over to staff for presentation. Mr. Collins, Mr. Leibig, or whomever?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This item, as you said, is to approve a consultant agreement with Cannon Corporation for this first phase of implementation of the One Water capital improvement programs envisioned. It includes both water and wastewater projects. So for the total amount of authorization of $815,237, with a 10% contingency at the discretion of the city manager for a total authorization of $896,761. These projects were envisioned in the One Water Plan and programmed into the city's capital budgets. They include the sewer projects that we've talked about for quite some time, including replacement of several gravity mains in Tuscany Road, Main Street, San Joaquin Street, Beach Comer, looking at replacing pipe in the neighborhoods upstream of Lift Station 1. Lift Station 1 is the lift station at Oysters. And cap replacement, which is there are end caps installed on some of the sewer lines, replacing those caps with manholes. On the water side of the project, we have replacing the Bashan Booster Station, a new fill line for the Blanca tanks, a fill line for the Nutmeg tank, a new Nutmeg tank, and upgrades at the Elena Booster Pump Station. Normally, well, not normally, ideally, the city engineering staff could design these projects, as was alluded to by a previous speaker. Unfortunately, most small cities do not have the staffing, nor the desire to staff up for a design projects of this magnitude. I believe Cannon has somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 folks on each team, probably infeasible for the city to staff up to provide that design work. The selection process started earlier this year. We sent out an RFP for both the wastewater and water projects and received several responses to that RFP. Staff interviewed the top-rated consultant teams and unanimously recommending Cannon Corporation for both of the projects. We have Steve Khan on the line, who's going to give a brief presentation on Cannon itself, a local engineering firm, and then an overview of what their design work will entail. So Steve's gonna share his screen with a short presentation and take it away, Steve.
All right. Thank you very much, Rob. Good evening. My name is Steve Khan, as Rob said, and I am representing Cannon here tonight. We are pleased to work on the One Water Project for the city of Morro Bay. In the presentation today, in the presentation tonight, like Rob said, I will be telling you a little bit about Cannon and then I'll discuss in more detail the two water, or should be the water and wastewater projects we are requested to work on. At the end of the presentation, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. So with that, I'm going to share my screen and make this work. All right. All right, can we see that?
Yes, uh-huh.
Perfect. All right, so One Water Projects. So who is Cannon? Established in 1976, we're a full firm, full-service, multidisciplinary firm of 130 professionals. Our headquarters in San Luis Obispo, which as you know, is very close to Morro Bay. Some of the areas that we work in, we work in civil engineering, mechanical engineering, land surveying, construction management and inspection, automation and controls, landscape architecture, and land planning. So what areas do we work on? We work on public infrastructure. That's taking care of a city like ours with water and wastewater projects, which are the subject tonight. Stormwater management and all the other things that are listed on the screen there. We also do a lot of work into water resources. So this here project is right up our alley. We do civil engineering, structural, mechanical, electrical, and the other ones listed on the screen. We also work in the surveying field, construction management, automation and controls, electrical engineering, and structures. So let's talk a little bit more detail about the projects that we'll be working on for this city. This is the Phase 1 implementation project- This is the Phase 1 Implementation Project for the wastewater projects. We're going to be putting a new sewer main in Tascadaro Road, right there at the State Route 1 interchange. We're working on Main Street, putting a new sewer main in there, and in San Joaquin. We'll also be working in the Beach Comer area on that sewer main that goes right there by the beach, and then all the backyard sewers in an old subdivision. In research for this project, I was looking at the old maps, and those lots were actually created in 1917, which is a long time ago. And then also replace the end caps like Rob talked about. What we'll do is we'll put sewer manholes there and reduce the amount of infiltration that occurs there. This will all help Lift Station 1 with the amount of water that comes to them from infiltration. Some of the key considerations on this project. This is Tascadaro Road and State Route 41 and State Route 1. The red line represents the current location, proximal location of the sewer main. We're looking at a good relocation spot for a new sewer main. We are aware that you have a recent hotel project on this commercial piece of project right here. So we'll take that into consideration and looking if we can't get a better alignment. Also, we'll be looking at this intersection here, which is Highway 41 and Main Street. We know that you have a roundabout plan there, so we want to make sure that the improvements we put in will facilitate that roundabout in the future. And then we'll also look at construction staging so the traffic continue to flow as the project is built. This is the Beach Comer Sewer Main. That picture right there on the left-hand side of your screen is a lifted up, or not lifted up, the sidewalk is sunken and the manhole has stayed up just to show you where that sewer main is. So we'll be working on that. Preliminary, we're looking at probably putting it more in the street, not in the gutter flow line to reduce infiltration there and also to ease the maintenance of it. This is the picture. INI stands for infiltration and inflow. So we have some information that the city's already acquired. We'll be looking at those monitoring reports to figure out what are the neighborhoods where we can really start reducing that. And we'll prioritize with staff an annual replacement program to begin putting those in the place. These are just a couple of pictures. I'm sure you've seen this. This is right on Beach Comer. The proximity of the houses are very close together, and there's very little room to work in there. This is a picture of the location of your backyard sewer mains in that particular area. This is a project we recently did in Paso Robles, in the Sherwood Acres. Very, very similar to this project, so we have a lot of experience in this type of work. So a recipe for success in this type of work. The first thing we did in Paso Robles, and we plan to carry on to here, we want to do an extensive community program, engage the neighborhood before we even start design, find out what their issues are, what they want us to do, where their sewers are located, and really get their input. And then, as we go through the design, we'll inform them again of what type of work we're going to do and where we plan to do it, and work with them together as a team. And finally, during construction, we'll continue the construction outreach program so that when we're in their backyards, working in a property, they're fully informed and they know what's going on. This is a HDD specialist, which is horizontal directional drilling. That's one method to solve this. If you leave the sewers in the backyard, you actually come in and you bore through the existing sewer to replace it with a new pipe, and then you reattach the laterals into that. So that's something we'll look at doing. As I mentioned earlier, we have a large construction management team. We will work with the residents in the community and being sure they're fully informed during this project. The next project I'd like to talk about is the nutmeg pressure projects, what we call them, but they're basically water, storage, and delivery projects. The first one is the Elena and Nutmeg Tank System. On the Elena tank, we're going to look at replacing the booster pumps there. They're old and worn out. We're also going to look at the site and see that, because there's a plan to have a new tank there in the future, to look at when we put anything new on that site, to be sure that it leaves room for future improvements. We're also going to hire divers to dive both in the Elena tank and the nutmeg tank so that they can look at the residue built up in the tank and also the integrity of the tank, making sure that there's no rust or other problems with the tank. If there is, we might move those up in the schedule to get them replaced sooner. We'll also be replacing the line that fills the nutmeg tank, goes right through that side of that property line. Now, that corridor right there has a lot of utilities. It is a storm drain, and it is a sewer main. So we'll be working in there to fit the new water line up to the nutmeg tank. And then we'll be replacing the nutmeg tank with a large 1 million gallon tank in order to achieve the flows you need for that particular area of Morro Bay. This is a picture of the nutmeg tank, and this is a picture of that driveway that goes up to the nutmeg tank. We're going to look at all sorts of different ways to get access onto the particular property so we don't disturb this neighborhood. But as we do, we will definitely have an outreach program. We'll be talking to the neighborhood and showing them what we're going to do, get their input, and minimize the impact to the residents in that particular area. And this is a picture of supplementary drawings of the nutmeg tank. You keep the other tank in place, build the nutmeg tank, and then remove the old tank once the new tank is in place. And on the left is a artist's rendering or artist's picture of what that new tank could look like. This is a side yard of the properties where that fill line to the nutmeg tank will go. We're working on that. This is the booster station at the Elena tank and the little Elena tank there in the neighborhood. Next project is the Juniper Avenue. We'll be doing a new line there, and we'll also have a PRV valve, which is a pressure-reducing valve on that system to make the system function better. And this is a picture of Juniper Avenue. Well, we'll be placing that new water line. Then we'll also be working on Sequoia. The two lines will be replacing on that road. We'll actually be doing a parallel line and a replacement line on that road. There's a picture of that. The next area we're going to work is in the Bashan Booster Station, which is shown in the bottom right corner of the picture, up to the Blanca Tanks. The Bashan Booster Pump breaks down a lot and doesn't work very well, so we're going to look at replacing that. We're also going to do a study for the city to look at different ways that you could fill the Blanca Tanks more efficiently from other existing lines, or maybe from a new line in a different direction. We'll be replacing the Blanca Tank fill line from the Bashan Booster Station up through the neighborhood. And we're replacing or looking at abandoning the Bashan Booster Station, because if you have a new, bigger line, you won't need that booster station. And here's a picture of the Blanca Tanks and the road that goes up to them. And this is the, this is the Bashan Booster Station there at the end of the road, right by State Route 1. On relevant project experience, I'd just say that that's what Cannon does. We do engineering designs, the water and wastewater system. We've done miles of this, and this is our expertise, so we're looking forward to work on this project. Right now, we're doing construction management on a 4 million gallon partially buried Priestess concrete tank for the city of Paso Robles. This is the same type tank we're looking at putting in at there to replace the nutmeg tank. And again, we worked on a nutmeg project in the past, and we'll carry through and continue it up to completion. And now with that, I hope I covered enough material for you, and I would open it up for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Very much appreciated. Thank you, Rob, for your presentation as well. Maybe I can start with a few questions, possibly first for Mr. Leibig, and then for you, Steve, directly. Rob, are you still there?
Yes.
Great. Can you tell me with regard to the One Water Plan, how was it that these projects were prioritized and are appearing first? And what's the rationale behind that with regard to that overall plan?
On the sewer side, the sewer lines are among the oldest in the city and have the highest level of INI. We've heard a lot in the past from the community about the Main Street line and how much it needs repair. So we're hoping to reduce the amount of inflow infiltration significantly. Also, there's a capacity issue with the Main Street line. It does not have enough capacity for peak wet weather flow, so we'll be looking to upsize that line. These are the first of the critical projects. For the, on the water side, the nutmeg pressure zone improvements are really to improve the fire flow requirements in that area. There's a huge fire flow demand in the nutmeg pressure zone. It's Delmar School. The fire code requires several hours at 4,500 gallons per minute. Currently, the existing storage tank is a 100,000 gallon storage tank. There is not near enough storage in there to address fire issues should they happen at the Delmar School with fire flow and meet the fire code and fire insurance requirements. This will also reduce the amount of maintenance that we do on the Bashan Booster Station by eliminating that booster station and be able to fill those Blanca Tanks either through an improved fill line or through the distribution system on the east side of the highway. The One Water Plan has basically 20 years' worth of projects to upgrade and replace systems in both water and wastewater systems in the city. Also, the One Water Project, the plan, is not a static plan. So we'll be revisiting this planning effort once every five years to reprioritize those projects as the city grows towards build-out and assessing those needs in the future.
So just to summarize and make sure I got it. One, the prioritization is based upon a significant public safety issue with regard to fire flow demand, especially for Delmar and the school and our young people.
Correct.
And then secondarily, the, some of the oldest infrastructure around, and maybe some of the infrastructure in neighborhoods that has the highest level of INI, this is being prioritized because of that.
Correct.
Okay, good. And just because I've had a number of people ask, why can't this be done in-house with the staffing that you have or we have within the department?
As you know, our staffing in Public Works is very lean. You have a city engineer and two unlicensed assistant engineers. We do a great job on small projects. This would require much more staffing and equipment that we don't possess. We do not have a survey team, nor the appropriate equipment to do the survey work needed to do. We don't have CAD stations, and we just don't have the manpower to deliver these projects in a reasonable amount of time to get, really, because the goal is to get these projects out to construction, not spend a long time in the design process. Just want to add on the, on the water system improvements, you've probably noticed it only brings us to 30% design on these projects. That is because we'll need to go through an environmental process, so we have to comply with CEQA for the new water storage tank. And then also, we need a coastal development permit. The tank is actually located outside the city limits in the county, so we'll be pursuing those. Those two processes will inform the final design, and we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves and go to final design before we have all the environmental requirements and the permitting requirements that the county might impose on these projects. So we're taking it stepwise. Additionally, as you know, the Blue Ribbon Committee, when looking at rates, helped us right-size our capital improvement project on the water and wastewater projects. And we only have a certain amount of cash flow available to build capital projects. These projects that are selected fit within that, those cash flow parameters.
Am I correct in assuming that the current, well, the 2-218 prior processes that were approved that increased rates made accommodations for funding the One Water Program and these capital improvements?
That is correct.
Not looking at new increases in rates required to complete this?
No, these capital improvement programs were built into the existing rates.
And then, of course, I've had, actually, several individuals comment about we're in so-called whitewater times with COVID-19. The city will be taking a large hit financially, probably because of loss of sales tax and TOT revenues. Is this the right time to do a project like this? Or is this outside of the impacts that we might feel with regard to this being the Enterprise Fund versus the General Fund?
I think it's outside the impacts that will hit our General Fund. And I might argue it might be the perfect time to put out a construction project with perhaps some infrastructure money that, for recovery, that could be coming down. To have shovel-ready projects is very important. To have CEQA complete, projects that are ready to bid, should there be funding made available for recovery, will put us ahead of other agencies that have to step up that design effort.
And the RFP that you put out, was this an RFP that required you to automatically take the lowest bidder? Or were there other criteria involved in making the selection?
No. In the state of California, for professional services, we are prohibited from bidding these services. So we select the most qualified firm and negotiate a fee. I will point out that the fees that Cannon is proposing are under the budgetary estimates that we are carrying in our budget and are very reasonable. I think Cannon worked very diligently in putting proposals together that give the city what it needs and nothing more, basically. So we're looking for, as Cannon puts it, the elegant solution to deliver these projects.
And just in your report, thank you for your report, by the way. Am I correct in noting that the budgetary savings for this fiscal year would be about $140,000 based upon the price that you've negotiated with Cannon?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And then the last question would be with regard to this and how it relates to the wastewater treatment or the WRF project, is this necessary to complete that project? How are they interlinked, or is this a separate capital improvement program that involves infrastructure improvements that are outside of that project?
This is outside of that project. Regardless of building a water reclamation facility, these improvements need to be done within the city, and the next 20 years' worth of improvements will continue to be, need to be done through this One Water Planning Effort.
And in a perfect world, should this have been done perhaps 10 or 15 years ago? Or at a time where this is coming to fruition as a problem, and it needs to be corrected now?
We've known that there's been problems in both our water and sewer system until we completed the One Water Plan and the requisite simulation modeling. We didn't know exactly where these problems existed and didn't and didn't have good capital programs to deliver these projects. So ideally, maybe they're a few years behind schedule, but it really took the One Water Plan to schedule these and put them in the right order to be delivered as needed.
Great, thank you. That concludes my questions. Councilmember Davis, sir, questions?
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Khan, thank you for your very thorough presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Gave me much better understanding of the project. Rob, for the Nutmeg Tank, will we need to acquire additional property to place a one-million-gallon tank?
We may need additional property to fit that tank in. We currently lease the property that the, the tank is on for perhaps about, I think it's running about thirty thousand dollars a year to lease that one acre existing tank site. As part of this project, we're going to investigate what it would take to acquire that property in fee to reduce that ongoing expensive expense. I think over the, probably the past twenty or thirty years, we've probably paid for that property over several times.
Okay, thanks.
And we have a right-of-way and property acquisition firm on our team to assist in that. And it kind of goes along with what Rob was talking about, that his staff doesn't have the abilities to do it. He doesn't have an in-house, right-of-way and property acquisition expert on his staff. So there are a lot of specialties that we have on our team.
Okay. And then I want to talk a little bit about the Beachcomber neighborhood. And my first question is going to be to our attorney. Chris, I live in the Beachcomber neighborhood. Do I have a, a conflict of interest in, in any part of this agenda item?
These, this agenda item is going to apply to the public generally. So I would say that no, you don't have a conflict. This is something that is for the entire city, these benefits.
Okay. So Mr. Khan.
Yes, sir.
The community outreach section of our agenda item talks about the, working in the backyards of the neighborhood. And I, I can envision that I will have neighbors coming to me and asking me what that's going to look like. So can you lead me through the process of how you're going to do the community outreach? And, and maybe what people need to expect is going to happen in their backyards?
I'd be happy to. So first of all, we're going to investigate what areas prioritize, what areas are needed, look at all the data, do all the background research. Once we've come up with that, we'll call together a neighborhood meeting and bring everybody together and tell them exactly what we plan to do. First thing we want to do is see if there's any of these sewer mains we can bring out of the backyards and put them in the streets. Obviously, it's difficult to run a sewer lateral back through the side yard to the connection point that's in the backyard. But we're going to investigate that and look at which streets we can do that on and what streets we can't. Then we'll have a neighborhood meeting and look at bringing the public up to speed about what we're looking at and how we're going to do it. We would then go back to the public and people that live in that area. When we're at thirty percent design saying, here's kind of what we come up with. Here's what we're thinking about. We would like your input and your, your information on this. And we continue to do that through the design process. Once we got into construction, if we did an H D D, which is a horizontal directional drilling, what would happen is somebody would come in and they would disconnect lateral from the main in their backyard. Then they would come through and we would bore and bore a new line that goes through the backyards, put in that new lateral and then reconnect their laterals. So what they would see in their backyards is little holes that were dug where their lateral connected to the main. And they would see maybe a couple other potholes and spots where there were conflicts. And then they'd have workers coming in their backyard to reconnect those mains and we'd be spinning the main through there and connect that backup. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Maybe if you could describe the little holes that are going to be dug in the backyards. When you say little holes, is that one foot in diameter or three?
I would think the holes are more like three feet by three feet in diameter. As I was preparing this PowerPoint, I was actually, I took a slide out, but I was looking at what we did in the past. And they're about three by three, enough so a person, a man or woman can get in there and work on the lateral and the main and disconnect them.
Okay, but there will be some traffic of people going in and out of, of backyards potentially. Do, do you see that that's, that's going to be the general way that it operates for most people?
I would think so, yes. And I think there will be people in their backyards. But once again, those people that live there are going to know the day the person's coming in, who they are and what they're doing. That's what the public outreach campaign is all about.
Okay, so, so your goal is going to be to minimize disruption to homeowners?
Absolutely.
But they're, but they do need to expect something. And I guess the, the goal will be that we will have better operating sewer lines and Rob's VAC truck is going to be spending less time parked in front of my driveway.
Yes, sir. And I can't stress enough, you guys have a lot of infiltration and inflow that goes into your line. So when we start solving that and reducing that inflow, that reduces the flow that goes to your current wastewater treatment plant and to your future facility that you're building up, coming up soon. So it will help in many senses.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, any questions, sir?
Yes, thank you. Question for Mr. Newmeyer. Is there a conflict of interest if Councilmember Davis puts a big sign in his front yard that says he lives here?
Well, that would be a First Amendment issue and it's his private property. So he has the right to do that.
Okay. Speaking of conflict of interest, can someone tell me who Jeff Cannon is?
Mike? Jeff Cannon is a water utility worker who's a fairly new employee. He, he's a lead worker that came over from the, the city of San Luis Obispo. No relation to Michael Cannon, who's the, I believe he's the CEO of Cannon Corporation.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. Steve, I want to thank you for your PowerPoint presentation. I thought it was a great presentation because the picture means a lot more than a thousand words. And you were able to do a few slides really bring me up to speed on some of the conditions out there that we've, community members have been wanting to get fixed for four or five years now. And very happy that, that this is going forward. You had mentioned that there might be like a ten-person team. Is that true? Are you going to be on that team? What is your role with Cannon?
My role is I'm, first of all, the overall project manager. But on the Beachcomber project, I'll be the specific project manager. And I'll be manning that ten-plus-or-minus-person team. And then there's another person in our firm, Mike Kilborn, who'll be doing the Nutmeg project. His expertise is in water projects. So he'll be the project manager on that project. Why we have two project managers? Because they're two distinct projects. We want to make sure that we can fully man the projects and, and maintain them.
Okay. Another thing, the staff report, I really liked seeing the critical pass schedule, which you've had trouble getting from some consultants. And I think you hit the nail on the head and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Is there? So your contract, if I understand it correctly, is eight-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And that takes us from a design standpoint through a hundred percent through the wastewater projects, but only thirty percent through the water project? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And then you, does your firm ever do fixed-price contracts for projects like this?
We'd be willing to negotiate whatever works for an agency. So we would be willing to talk about, sure.
And this eight, this eight-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars, that includes all the subconsultants that are required for your design work? So the city won't be tasked with having to hire other consultants above and beyond what we're going to pay you?
We put together a complete team. We have a soils engineer. We have, we've hired a firm to do borings in the street to pothole, look at the utility conflicts. We have a right-of-way engineer, excuse me, a right-of-way and property acquisition team on it. We have an environmental team.
So you got the bases covered, it sounds like.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Another question, you know, these are very difficult economic times for everybody. Will there be anyone on your team who is a resident of Morro Bay?
I do not believe so.
Okay. And you said the Cannon Associates is headquartered here? You're not headquartered in Bakersfield? Is that an old?
No, sir.
Is that another company or?
We have an office in Bakersfield.
Okay, but that's not where your headquarters are?
No, no.
So most, most of your people are here?
Yeah, Mike Cannon and I actually went to college together. We both graduated from college in nineteen eighty-three from Cal Poly. And he's been around in San Luis Obispo ever since then.
Okay.
And just as, as another information for you is we do projects all over the county. I'm currently leading a project for the county of San Luis Obispo where I'm working on the Morro Bay to Cayuse Connector Project, which is that multipurpose trail on the west side of State Route One. So we're heavily involved with all projects in this area.
Okay. Is there any way, and I'm just going to throw this out there, is there any way you could possibly incorporate a Morro Bay resident on your team? If you looked for somebody or is that another question?
I, we had a qualified individual that wanted to work for us. We would love to have them on our team.
Okay. That's, that's a fair, fair statement for sure. Let's see, what else do they want to ask?
And actually, with that question, I will check into it because I don't know exactly if one of the people that is on our team is from the city of Morro Bay. It may be. Matter of fact, I think he lives in Cayucus.
Oh, that's, that's a strike against him.
Yeah.
Let's see, what else do they want to ask you? Let's see. Okay, those are all the questions I have. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Addus, any questions?
No, I think both of mine were answered. We had a question that came into council about local work and reallocating funds from the Enterprise Fund to the General Fund. But I think we know we can't do that. And then are we going to be able to do these projects given city finances? But it sounds like the actual projects themselves are going to be a little bit farther down the line and hopefully we'll be out of the crisis by then. So those were the, those were the two questions I had and I think they were both answered already.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McPherson?
Thank you. And thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciated it. And I did get some questions to Rob ahead of time and he got some answers. And I heard some of the answers to my questions in the presentation. So I appreciate that. Just a couple others, if I could start with the Nutmeg Pressure Zone improvements. Is it really feasible to build a tank that big on that location, which is ten times the amount of water?
Yes. We did schematic layouts for the city of Morro Bay a few years ago on that tank and we can fit a one-million-gallon tank up there on that hill.
And how difficult is it to actually do the construction up there? I know that's also an issue.
You know, it's not difficult as much as it is time-consuming and getting the materials up there is probably the biggest challenge without disrupting the neighborhood. But actually building it, you know, people build pre-stressed concrete tanks all over the place. And one of the reasons why we're favoring that design is it can be set down into the ground so it's less visible from below and it takes up less space because you're actually building it into the ground and putting the dirt on the side of it. So it's probably one of the better designs to use in that particular area. But the main impacts, like I said earlier, would be the delivery of the materials, the concrete trucks, the steel, getting that materials up to the site to work on it.
But you're confident you can do that?
Yes, definitely.
All right. And I noticed in your proposal, you actually talked about the Elena tank site options. And it sounded from your presentation that you'd already made some decisions about what you wanted to do with that tank. And I'm wondering if it's still an open issue of whether or not that tank will be necessary.
I, I'm going to try to answer that, but I'd like Rob to weigh into it because he knows more about his system than I do. But the city has asked us to look at the Elena tank and the, and the, how it stands as far as its maintain, maintenance and what kind of state of repair it's in. So we're going to take a look at that. And if we find it is in bad state of repair, the city may decide to change direction a little bit to do something different to maybe replace that tank with this project. We don't know. So we're going to look at that. We're going to have divers go into it. And then we're going to replace the booster pumps from that tank up to the Nutmeg Tank. And we're also going to, in the future, there's a plan to have a new tank on that site. So when we replace the boosters, we'll site those booster pumps so they're not in the way of the future site layout.
Okay. And do you plan to do any community outreach in that project? The replacement of the Nutmeg Tank?
Absolutely. We'll be going up to that neighborhood up there in Nutmeg, telling them early on what we're doing, how we plan to do it and how we plan to have the contractor work. And we'll want to get their input on that. So number one, they're knowledgeable. And number two, they live there. They know what goes on. They know how people drive, they know how people park. They may give us some insight into how we can do it better so it's less disruptive to the neighborhood.
Okay.
Mr. McPherson, I also want to point out that this project will go through environmental review. So the CEQA process, so it'll be going through the, the city's planning commission. We'll be lead agency on the CEQA. So there will be public hearings as part of that public outreach program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. If I could move over to the water collection system improvements or the, excuse me, not the water, but the sewer. Regarding the optional tasks, seventy-nine-point-six-thousand dollars. Could you, and you suggest in the, in your proposal that it's, it includes community outreach and working with Caltrans. Can you tell me, I, I thought you had mentioned that you were already planning on doing community outreach. Is this some additional community outreach that you may do or might do?
No, we included community outreach in our original proposal. And then when I was negotiating the contract with Rob, we talked about like Caltrans permitting. I said, we should do the contract permitting, excuse me, yeah, the construction permitting with Caltrans to take that burden off of the city. The two optional tasks inside the waste project are to do construction management. And then also we put our right-of-way and property acquisition specialist. Because if we get into that backyard and we can find a way to sewer it from a street or we need another easement somewhere to make the system work, we would use them to assist in acquiring that property. But the, the community outreach program was, is included in the package. It's not optional.
Okay, so what is the breakdown? Did you have, do you have a breakdown of how much is related to Caltrans and how much is related to the other piece?
I can probably get that for you. Look at my fancy spreadsheet here. We've budgeted eight thousand dollars to work with Caltrans. And we've budgeted twelve thousand dollars to do community outreach.
And this is over and above what's in the, what's in the original contract?
No, no, that is money that's already in the original contract.
Okay, I was thinking about the seventy-nine-point-six-thousand-dollar optional.
Right, that optional, ten thousand of that optional is for our right-of-way and property acquisition. And the other remainder is for construction management.
Okay, okay. Because it does say community. All right, thank you. Yep. Last, when we talk about possibly replacing the sewer lines in the backyards would you then make those, so would they, would you expect to replace those? would you then make those, so would they, would you expect to replace those holes?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. We will go in, replace the main, reconnect. And the goal always is, just like a boy scout, you want to leave the backyard better than you came in.
Okay. Good. And if you have to put them in, in the street, is there money or is it legal to use city money to then connect that house to the new sewer line?
Um, I would say, and maybe the attorney or Rob wants to weigh into this, but I'd say, yes, it's legal to use water and wastewater funds to reconnect the residents because it's still tied to water and wastewater.
Okay. Because I know if there's a problem in that line, it's the homeowner's responsibility.
Typically, a homeowner owns the lateral from the house to the main.
Right.
That's, that's the way it is here in Morro Bay. The homeowner owns the lateral from the house to the main, including the connection. The difference here is if these get moved to the street, it's the city moving to the, them to the street for the overall benefit of, of the city. So a sewer line in the street is much easier to maintain than it is in a five-foot wide backyard easement.
Right. All right. Thanks. Well, thank you both very much. I appreciate the answers.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that very much. Appreciate it. With that, I'm going to open up public comment. AGP, do we have any public out there? AGP?
Are you out there?
It's just me.
Excuse me, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, there is.
Thank you.
All right. And caller, you are live? Okay. I don't thi, I think that's. I don't think we're going to get it through. Yeah, I'll go, I'll go to the next one. Okay, caller, you're live?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor of City Council, this is Dan Sedley of Morro Bay. I, please, please forgive me that I'm unable to see the, the displays that you all are seeing. So my questions may be somewhat redundant to you, but they're still questions to me, not having seen the charts and graphs presented. My, my first question is, I want, I want to be reassured that, that citizens will not be paying for their backyard laterals out to, out to, out to new mains in the street. I think I've heard that referred to, but I want to know most assuredly. Second, I want to know if there is any, any chance that this project will cause, cause increased enterprise rates to water and sewer funds? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. AGP, is there anybody else?
Yes. And caller, you are live?
Go ahead, please. Welcome.
This is Betty Winhold. I have several questions and comments. First, I'll start with the nutmeg tank because that was something that came up when I was on city council. And what we were told at that time that it did not have to do with the elementary school. So I don't know if that's a new thing you've come up with, but it really had to do with the construction that was going on along 41 at that time, the new condos, minors, and all that kind of stuff. And it was not at that time related to the elementary school at all. So I wanted to offer that piece of information. The second piece related to that has to do with the size, that it will be nine to 10 times as big as it currently is. And I understand that you're sinking that into the earth from what you said tonight. And I'm wondering how that weight will affect the backyards of the people who'll be adjacent to that tank? Or what kind of distance there will be for them on that? The third thing related to nutmeg and these other projects is when we passed our first 218 back in 2007, these were part of the projects that should have been done back then. So when you asked Mr. Livick earlier, should these have been done earlier? Absolutely. And in fact, we approved sewer and water rates for them so they could be done. But the councils at those times and sent, you know, from 2010 forward chose not to do that. The last thing I want to say is reiterate what Mr. Sedley just said. That was my question as well. Will the homeowners be responsible for moving their connections from their backyard to their front yards when it's not their fault that they're having to be moved? Or will the city be paying for that? And I would suggest that this is a chunk of money. It's almost a million dollars when you talk about the 10% contingency that goes with it. And that's just for the design. And so my thing would be that you break this up and do the, the two that are related to neighborhoods and the main on, on Morro Bay or on main and 41, and that you let the nutmeg tank be a second priority that maybe doesn't take precedence right now. And I'll close with my last comment being related to the one at 41 and Maine. And that is, the city has consistently pursued this roundabout at that position when the community has told you they're not comfortable with the safety because of the high school at that location. And yet you have pursued that with Caltrans regardless of our input. And so I want to raise that as a, still as a concern with regard to that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. AGP, anybody else in the queue?
Yes, sir. One more.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, caller, you're alive?
Hello and welcome. Good evening. Hearing nobody?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else in the queue? AGP, any?
No, sir.
Thank you. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back. Rob, just a couple of points. Could you reiterate the issue with regard to the reconnection costs if you move it to a city property?
I would not anticipate that the homeowners would be responsible for those costs if it's benefit to the entire system to move the sewer main out to the street. It's, would be part of the project to relocate their sewer lateral.
Thank you. And Mr. Sedley's question, no, this will not enter, increase the enterprise, the water sewer enterprise rates. It's currently within the previous 218s that were passed. And the other question maybe for Steve would be, the sinking the large nutmeg tank into the earth, is that going to have an impact on backyards?
There's been preliminary soils investigations into that area by Earth Systems Pacific. And the ground there can hold the tank once it's designed appropriately and installed appropriately, and will have no effect on the surrounding properties. As far as earth movement or something like that.
Thank you. And Mr. Livick, would you please clarify for Ms. Winhold's the requirement that Caltrans is suggesting that they will build around, want a round, roundabout build at 41 and 1? And just update us once again on that?
The city is still pursuing a intersection improvement project at 41 and Maine. There are two alternatives being carried, a signalization and a roundabout. We have a consultant on board, GHD Engineering, that is working with one of the other team members on this project to bring forward the environmental on that project. So we'll be going to SEQA soon. And at that time, the most superior alternative will be selected to move forward with, based on community input and funding available.
Thank you.
I also want to talk about the, the fire flow needs. In the most recent analysis prepared by, through the One Water Report, prepared by Corolla, showed the elementary school as the highest fire flow demand. I'm quite certain that there's other fire flow demands in that neighborhood with apartments and miners. So it, it all adds up to needing fire protection.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that. With that, I'll bring it back to council and either entertain a motion or discussion first?
I'll move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute a time and materials consultant agreement with Cannon Corporation for engineering services to implement the first phase of the One Water Plan in an amount not to exceed $815,237 without prior written authorization. And additionally authorize a 10% contingency to be used for additions to the scope of work at the discretion of the city manager, resulting in a total authorization of $896,761, with the budget for the project coming from the water and wastewater enterprise funds.
Thank you. Okay. Who was the second on that? I'm sorry.
Robert Davis.
Okay. So motion by Councilmember Addis for the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Davis. Thank you for that. Any further discussions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of more questions for you, Mr. Khan, if I could. And I just want to, was the, Steve, was, was the One Water Report of, of use to Cannon in preparing your proposal for this work?
Yeah, we looked at it extensively. Basically, it's divided into different plans. There's a wastewater plan, there's a water plan. We use that information and the project descriptions to work our proposal up. Yeah, so there was valuable information and valuable data in the One Water Plan for us, yes.
Okay. And does Cannon Associates provide program management services?
Oh, yeah, definitely. As far as managing capital projects, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, definitely. It's what I do. I mean, I've, I've done capital projects for 35 years, and it's, it's what we do, one of the things we do.
Okay. So in terms of this guy, let's, let's be honest, we're in very difficult, this is for the council and staff, very difficult economic times. And I think the way we procure things needs to be looked at. And I think we have an opportunity at this point in time to maybe implement some best practices and procurement of professional services. And by way of background, the last program that I was responsible for at Long Beach City College, where I was deputy program manager, was I drafted and negotiated all professional service agreements with engineers, architects, and so forth. You know, and it's been a few years ago, but at that time, every contract that I negotiated was a fixed fee. Our tendency at the city here to have contingencies added on and because it fits within the budget, or to call it a time and materials contract whether not to exceed price, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I, I don't feel like it's the best thing that we can do for our ratepayers. I think these agreements, in my experience at least, are routinely fixed fee agreements, which protect the ratepayers from unnecessary change orders, administrative costs on the city's part, dealing with these things. And frankly, I'd like to suggest that, that this contract be negotiated, renegotiated, whatever you want to call it, to a fixed free, fixed fee contract at less than $815,000. We are in a serious financial position, and we have opportunities, I think, to be more aggressive in our procurement. I think the market will support it. And I think we have to be very smart business people and protect our ratepayers. The other concern I have, there was a question from the public as to whether or not these projects would fit within the budget and there would be no further rate increases, water or sewer rate increases. The design, I want everyone to understand on the council and also in the community, whoever's listening in, the design services fit within a budgeted number. But the real risk that is still out there is what the cost of constructing the design is going to be. Now, we have estimates that were put together as part of the One Water Plan. So there are construction estimates in there. But those estimates are already almost two years old. So I think it's not completely honest to say that we can commit to not having future rate increases, not knowing what the actual cost of that particular project is, or any of the projects, of the three projects that we're looking at that are part of the $126 million. So I want the public to understand that, and I hope the council understands that. I, I, I'm sure you do. So that's where I stand on this. I'm, I can't support this as currently written. I like Cannon Associates' proposal. I think the city's making the correct decision in choosing them. But I think the way we're structuring the contract is not in the best interests of our ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Any other comments, discussion?
I would like to make some comments.
Sure, certainly.
First of all, you know, I think this is a project that we, we've waited for a long time, both of these projects. They've been on the books for, I think, at least eight years. The nutmeg tank was first discussed in 2012 as, as being needed. So, and we have the money in the 218 process. I'm wondering if Mr. Heller would accept a contract without the contingency? Because I believe that the contract as it was written for the $815,000 is based on actual numbers of what they estimate is going to cost to do the project. In which case, if we, if something comes up and you need to ask for more, you could certainly do that. But that would be a fixed price contract then for what they said they would do. Would you agree with that?
Well, I mean, I don't really want to get in the middle of negotiating this contract, particularly with the consultant here. But I do think it's important for us to look at business opportunities here. I think a fixed price contract is appropriate in any economic conditions. And I think in today's economic condition, we really need to look at that $815,000 number one more time and see if we can get a better deal. I mean, we need to be realistic about the economy, what the market is, not only for design services, but for construction services. And if there's opportunities for us to, to, to put together a better deal, I think we need to pursue that.
If, if I might just add, this was the lowest bid on the project, and it is less than what the estimates were. So I would be comfortable moving forward with the $815 as a fixed price.
Comments? I too support the staff report. I think, one, these projects are long overdue, have been requested significantly by a large number of community members as well. I do believe that the negotiated price and methodology used has produced an excellent product that is below budget at this point in time. Remember that the overall One Water Capital Improvement Plan has a total of approximately $40 million worth of capital improvement projects over 35 some odd years that have been built into the current rates. And so even a minor variance here will not impact the enterprise fund rates, in my opinion. So with that, I think waiting because of issues regarding COVID-19 could cause problems. of issues regarding COVID-19 could cause problems for us from a from a standpoint of getting this done, and also from the standpoint of the cost of doing business. So with that, I will call the question.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you. Um, I'll entertain a motion to go beyond nine thirty. We're at the nine twenty hour right now.
Go move.
Second.
Posted by Councilmember Pearson to go beyond nine twenty, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Discussion. If not, roll call vote, please.
Pardon me. Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Indeed, thank you. With that, we'll move to item C dash four, introduction of ordinance number six three two to regulate tobacco vaping and secondhand smoke, including through a tobacco retailer licensing program, a prohibition on the sale of e-cigarettes, vaping products, and enhancing the city's current secondhand smoking regulations by a smoking policy for multi-unit housing. And I will turn it over to our esteemed attorney, Chris.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, this item is introduction of ordinance number six three two to regulate tobacco vaping and secondhand smoke. And the recommendation is to introduce it for first reading by title only with further reading waived. Uh, fiscal impact of this ordinance is that the tobacco retailer's license program, added in chapter 5.54, will create additional administrative costs for the city. Regulations may create also additional enforcement costs. Intent is to recoup those costs for the city through the license fee. Uh, also, the tobacco regulations may have an impact on the local economy in a way that would affect city finances. Nature and extent of those effects are currently unknown. As a matter of background, uh, this is the sixth time the city council has considered regulation of tobacco vaping and secondhand smoke. The original meeting was in October of 2019. There has been subsequent meetings in November and December of last year, and then January and February of this year. My recollection of those meetings is that there has generally been support on the council for implementing the American Lung Association recommendations to strengthen the local secondhand smoke. Uh, regulations currently on the books right now, and to also add some other recommendations from the ALA. Um, these are based upon a scorecard, which is included in the staff report, which if the ALA recommendations are put into the local code, then Morro Bay should get an A from the ALA. Um, those ALA recommendations include a tobacco retailer license program, prohibiting secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing, uh, and among other things prohibiting flavored tobacco. There has been, over the last four, five meetings held on this topic, vigorous discussion and public comment addressing a response to the national upsurge in the use of vaping products, especially among youth and the related health issues. At the last meeting, when this item was under discussion on February 11th, 2020, city council asked for staff to bring back the ordinance that is before council tonight for introduction and first reading. And that ordinance contains a number of key parts I wanted to go over. Uh, first, consistent with the American Lung Association or ALA general recommendations, one, secondhand smoke would be prohibited in multi-unit residences. Uh, essentially, these regulations would come into effect August 1st, and it would prohibit smoking in both the units and the common areas of apartments and condominiums, um, senior and assisted living facilities, and long-term healthcare facilities, except in designated smoking areas for the latter. Um, and this also would require signs to be put up so the tenants know about the new policy, and new and renewed leases would uh, require this policy. The second ALA recommendation is a tobacco retailer license program. Basically, the city would require a license from tobacco retailers in the city. And if you don't have the license, then you're not able to lawfully sell tobacco products. Therefore, the city can enforce both uh, regulations and local code and other regulations through uh, potentially losing the license. And that's an enforcement mechanism that the city gains by having this program. Also, consistent with the ALA recommendations, uh, merging issues, pharmacies will be prohibited from selling tobacco products. Uh, there'll be restrictions on cigars, basically meant to prevent young people from being able to purchase cheap cigars, and flavors. Uh, council had a vigorous debate about this, and council a majority vote recommended prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products, with the exception of menthol. And also must be noted that there will not be a prohibition on smokeless tobacco products. The biggest issue of discussion amongst council over the last number of meetings was the issue of vaping. Council directed staff to come back with an ordinance to prohibit the sale of all vaping products, which this ordinance will do. Uh, council also asked for a 100% ID check, and that is something as well in this ordinance. Tobacco retailers will need to verify the age of every person purchasing a tobacco product by means of a government issued or equivalent photo ID. Finally, uh, council asked staff to look into location restrictions. This is something that will need to be considered by planning staff and the planning commission, and it continues to be under review on whether or not there'll be location restrictions recommended to council to put into the local code. I want to point out, um, at the end of the staff report, I tried to make it as simple as possible for the effective dates. There are quite a few regulations in this ordinance, and based upon uh, what I guess would be common sense on rolling them out at different effective dates, are that the multi-unit housing prohibitions on smoking would be effective August 1st, which would be about two months after the ordinance is actually law, if it is passed or adopted at the next meeting, second reading. Uh, December 1st, 2020 is when the prohibition on vaping product sales would go into effect, which essentially provide about six months from after the ordinance would become law, if again, it's adopted at the second reading. And then about a year after the ordinance would become law, if again, at second readings, it's adopted, the tobacco retailer licensing program would be effective, which would be June 1st, 2021. I'm available to answer any questions, and uh, I will turn it back over to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, um, for capturing the prior um, council majority input and turning it into another ordinance. Um, with that, I'll open it up for questions. Councilmember Addis, question?
No, I don't have any questions. I feel like we've uh, had this discussion numerous times. I think we've had rich discussion about it. I think staff has done an excellent job trying to interpret the various um, varying directives of council. And I think we've come to something that we all agreed on before it came to us tonight. And so I feel pretty clear about what we're doing now. Or what I I feel clear about what's before us now, is what I should say.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Heller, any comments or questions?
Yeah, Chris, first of all, thanks for sorting all of this out and sticking with this. It's been a long, a long journey. I have a question about uh, comments that were brought up in the public comment section, and that's regarding hookah. I'm embarrassed to admit, I really barely know what hookah is. I don't know if nicotine is in hookah. I don't know anyone who smokes hookah, but could someone educate me about this and whether this is something that is that this uh, this item even addresses?
So uh, I would put myself in the same boat as you as not uh, having a broad knowledge of hookah. Um, however, my understanding is that essentially uh, hookah is a water pipe where tobacco is smoked, um, as one of the commenters mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, through a large pipe. Um, this ordinance would, as they said, prohibit flavored tobacco. And if most or all hookah uses flavored tobacco, then there would be the inability to purchase, uh, I guess flavored tobacco for hookah. Um, frankly, this is the first time that um, I had heard concerns about uh, this ordinance impacting uh, the community that uses uh, hookah. And if council would like, it could be reviewed, but I really don't have uh, uh, some sort of complete analysis on hookah other than um, it's banning flavored tobacco, other than menthol. And if they use flavored tobacco, then presumably they would not be able to buy their tobacco products in the city of Morro Bay.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Councilmember McPherson?
Uh, I have no questions.
Councilmember Davis?
Chris, going back to the hookah, uh, the proposed ordinance would restrict the sale of flavored tobacco for hookah smoking. But does the ordinance prohibit people from smoking flavored tobacco in a hookah that they purchased from outside the city?
Uh, in general, no, other than all smoking will be prohibited in multi-unit dwellings. But the ability to smoke tobacco on private property, other than the restriction just mentioned, is not going to be restricted.
So the ordinance prohibits only the sale?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Uh, thank you. Um, I have no questions with that. Um, AGP, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir. We have five in the queue.
Okay.
All right, let me go. And Speaker, you are live.
Hello and welcome.
This is Dan Sade from, hello, Mayor, hello, City Council. This is Dan Sade from Morro Bay. Uh, I I want to comment uh, about the the commenter at the general comment section, Michelle Catteray. I I live in the same neighborhood as she does, and I see the impact of of neighbors in in their residential homes or outside of their residential homes that are like, that are chain smokers and and breezes take their 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 cigarette smoke uh, a considerable distance. And and in that regard, I'm I'm hoping that that this uh, provides for the protection of secondhand smoke, uh, that that people, I I think, I think outside public buildings, isn't isn't there a a required distance of, say, 50 feet away or something like that, that that there could be the same thing, same kind of reasonable distancing for to protect secondhand smoke from residence to residence? Because there's not 20 feet between some balconies and some uh, residential living areas to uh, to to protect residents and their children. I I see children being exposed to secondhand smoke constantly in the neighborhood that I live in. And so I have to think that it goes on throughout our community. And um, uh, children truly are important, as are all residents. And and I I, so I want to see that there's some residential protection and not just multifamily uh, protection, as as has been mentioned uh, by Mr. Newmeyer. Uh, and that's my question, and that's my concern.
Thank you, Dan. Um, AGP, uh, next caller?
Speaker, you are live.
Welcome. Hello?
Hello?
Do you have a public comment? Perhaps the next caller, AGP?
Yes, sir. Okay, Speaker, you are live.
Hello and welcome.
Thank you all for taking the call. How are you doing tonight?
Good.
Fine, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Uh, I just had a commentary on kind of precedent and what type of precedent this would lead to, um, if we were to restrict adults from purchasing um, things that we feel might be uh, not beneficial to others and how impactful it might be. I'm calling specifically in regards to the hookah tobacco, looking for an exemption uh, as a cultural aspect. So this is something that's been smoked, enjoyed for hundreds of years, uh, with various cultures around the world, particularly Arab, Persian, Turkish, Armenian, Middle Eastern descent. And a lot of those cultures don't drink, and they resort to having hookah sessions where they smoke together and talk about business or politics. And you know, that's their, kind of like a cigar time, right? So you know, American culture will have maybe cigars and whiskey, you know, something like that. That culture will have hookah and tea. And they'll play backgammon, they'll share stories, they'll talk about the day. Not having the ability to buy hookah tobacco as an over 21-year-old adult because minors are abusing other products starts to go down a slippery slope where, you know, where do we cut off something for adults to make their own decision? So is it alcohol next? Because minors abuse alcohol, we're no longer going to sell alcohol? Uh, is it going to be, you know, weapons? Because people do stupid things with weapons, we're no longer going to sell weapons or what have you? I mean, all of a sudden, it it just becomes, you know, it can become a slippery slope where one thing leads to another. And I feel like as adults, we should be able to make our own independent decisions, as long as we're not harming somebody else. Um, and also, parents need to take responsibility for their children who don't act right. And you know, adults shouldn't suffer for that.
Thank you. Is there another caller, AGP?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Caller, you are live.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Bird. How are you all this evening? Um, you know, listening to the comments and then listening to what everyone says, I understand the feelings and um, you know, reasonings of people to want to protect every member within their community. I feel that this ban in this ordinance will disappropriately affect multiple family businesses that are already trying to struggle today. Um, as we speak, we've seen the unprecedented amount of this virus that we call that is going around. We're trying to protect the rights of adults and individuals. And and by banning this, you are singling out a um, a a number of people. And they can't um, help that they were born Middle Eastern. They can't um, you know, help that, you know, this is a part of their culture. This is something that's been going on for hundreds of years. And I would like the, I would like to ask the council to investigate what hookah is, because to some of it's, it's family, to some of it's, it's a way that we can sit down at the end of the day and talk to people that don't have necessarily the same social or economical values that we do, or maybe they come from a different uh, part of the world, or maybe they come from a different, you know, family background or political view. It's something that we can sit around together and discuss those in a way that is constructive. And it it brings us together. I've met friends all over the world, from Russia, from Saudi Arabia. Um, I'm talking a large, a large cultural balance in here, a a large cultural group that we've been able to bring together over this hobby that we call hookah. So I would ask that you find out what hookah really is. And once you find out what hookah really is, that it's not this vape thing, it is not this small portable thing that um, people can carry around and give to their children, or children can sneak out of the dresser or drawer. It's a piece of equipment. It's large. It's not something that's going to disappropriately affect children. And I think that's what a lot of people are asking to protect is our children, correct? But when they become adults and they can make uh, adult decisions, then I would say allow people to make those adult decisions and not take more liberties away when people are asking to be a little bit freer and a little bit uh, you know, in control of themselves. So thank you for hearing me out this evening.
Thank you so much. Um, AGP, next?
Yes, sir. Caller, you are live.
Welcome. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. I hope you're having a good night, staying safe. I would just like to make a quick comment saying that I oppose any flavor ban that pertains to hookah. If you could please really think about exempting hookah from any flavor ban. This will affect so many people and so many families on such a sad level. And we really plead that you guys research what hookah is. It is not the same thing as vaping and kids are not sneaking hookahs into schools. They are not smoking hookahs in schools or at home. And I think parents need to be held responsible and children, not even children, teenagers need to be held responsible for making bad decisions. And the state has taken away any repercussions. The schools have their hands tied. No one can discipline kids now when it comes to smoking. All that happens is it gets confiscated. And I don't think as a business owner, we should have our rights taken away because teens are doing bad things and no one's holding them responsible when I'm running the legal business. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller?
All right. Caller, you are live.
Hello and welcome.
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Oh. Hey Mayor Heading, this is Michelle Lester Catteray calling in again regarding the regarding the smoking ordinance and proposal for it. As I go through the ordinance as it's written now and I see that, you know, it states multi-use residents are the only ones and not including the following hotels, motels, mobile home parks, a single-family home. Again, smoking occurs in single-family homes and that smoke, you know, tends to continue on. Oh, can you hear?
Is this new public?
Oh, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now.
Okay, is this new public comment?
No, this is just in regards to this and that single-family homes should be considered in the ordinance as opposed to just multifamily homes.
Okay, go ahead then.
Okay, but I just wanted to have that, you know, this this does need to incorporate everyone and that it encompasses all individuals, not just those that are living in a multifamily resident area. And how we would go about, I mean, will we contact the ordinance officer regarding this? And then they would speak to individuals that are causing the, you know, an ongoing issue? And, you know, what is it that they will provide? Will they help those individuals seek some kind of assistance to stop smoking? Will they, you know, direct them to smoke elsewhere in the city? I don't know, in their home, in their vehicle? They're kind of, we kind of need to know that the city is going to encompass all of its city members, not just those that are in, you know, multifamily areas. Single-family homes need to be part of this ordinance so that we are protected. Children, elderly, just families, everybody's health is number one. So with that, I'd like to thank you for this evening.
Thank you, Michelle. AGP, anybody else?
I have no more in the queue, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, Council, I will close public comment and bring it back to us for either entertainment or further discussion. All right, let me start with Councilmember Davis.
I have no objection to this ordinance.
Okay, Councilmember McPherson.
I'll just wait for the vote.
Councilmember Heller.
So I have a question for Mr. Newmeyer relative to the single-family residence question that's been brought up in public comment. So Chris, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Sorry to wake you up. So are you aware of any ordinances relative to secondhand smoke and single-family dwellings? What are your thoughts or knowledge of that issue?
So the American Lung Association has recommended on the basis of secondhand smoke health issues that smoking be prohibited in multi-unit dwellings because there is the, there's a much greater likelihood of secondhand smoke going from one unit to another. When there's a detached, single-unit family dwelling, the idea is that secondhand smoke is not going to go from one lot to the other. So the secondhand smoke restrictions are why there are suggested to have prohibitions on smoking in multi-unit dwellings. The restriction is not necessarily intended to get people to stop smoking for their own personal health. It's to make sure that their neighbor's health isn't impacted by it. So, you know.
You don't know of any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I mean, the reasoning behind multi-unit dwellings having the prohibition as opposed to single-family homes is to prevent neighbors from getting the secondhand smoke. It's not to necessarily prevent an individual from smoking themselves.
Are you aware of any ordinances in other cities or jurisdictions that have something that banned secondhand smoke from single-family dwellings?
So it's an interesting question in regards to secondhand smoke coming out of, you know, a single-family dwelling and impacting a neighbor. Already on the books in Morro Bay, we have secondhand smoke regulations that say that it is if a nuisance is created by someone smoking anywhere to anyone else, then, you know, it is punishable by law. So if there was excessive smoking where there was constantly plumes of cigarette smoke, you know, leaving one property and going to another, then that's already a public nuisance. But to just prohibit cigarette smoking on private property, the city would need to have, I think, some pretty strong findings to justify that. The difference between prohibiting smoking on private property when the secondhand smoke doesn't leave the property, that is a big difference between saying that when you have a multi-unit dwelling where the smoke always is going to waft around the apartment building, then it's a public health issue. But it would be a whole different issue of findings for the city to justify banning smoking anywhere and everywhere.
Okay, so if someone did have that problem, they could call the city of Morro Bay and code enforcement or something like that? Is that what they would do?
Yes, in fact, in the code right now, the current code that we have right now, which has secondhand smoke regulations in it, there is a section looking for it right now. In chapter 9.24, the existing secondhand smoking regulations, it does provide in section 9.24030, secondhand smoke generally, it says that the non-consensual exposure to secondhand smoke and the uninvited presence of secondhand smoke on property in violation of this chapter shall constitute a nuisance. The current chapter goes on to talk about how basically smoking is prohibited in public places and essentially in unenclosed areas of hotels, businesses, et cetera. It does expressly say that you can smoke cigarettes on private residential properties. But if that secondhand smoke goes to the neighboring property, it could constitute a public nuisance. I would say that this type of issue, I think realistically would need to be rather excessive for city code enforcement to go out and issue a citation. But there certainly could be circumstances where it would be warranted.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize that was part of the municipal code. That's very helpful. Thank you. Those are the only questions I have. Are we discussing now, Mr. Mayor, or we? Let's track up what we're doing.
Yes.
So one more discussion, just comment. I don't know if the council has the stomach for modifying this thing at all. You know, frankly, I'm disappointed that menthol is still included. I'm disappointed that the flavored tobaccos, the non-smoking products have not been banned. But it's a, it's a great step in the right direction. It's taken us a long time to get here. And I suppose if we want to make it more strict, maybe we can amend it in the future. But in general, I really thank everybody, staff and council, and everybody's put in so much time getting us to this point. And as a final comment, it seems ironic to me that businesses are pushing back on this regulation when we're in the midst of a pandemic which preys on people with underlying health conditions, many of which are related to smoking tobacco products. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Addis.
I don't have any questions. I would, I do want to concur with Councilmember Heller though that that it's incredibly important right now that we're thinking about people's health and welfare and the idea of being able to limit access to a product that directly affects people's health and their ability to be resilient to coronavirus is critically important. So I want to thank Councilmember Heller for bringing that point forward.
Thank you, and I'll reiterate that. My thanks to Councilmember Heller for that comment. The cytokine storm and the adult respiratory distress syndrome secondary to the COVID-19 virus, the number one issue that is causally related to that is smoking and/or vaping. So with that, I will move staff recommendation introduced for first reading by title only with further reading waived ordinance number 632 to both add chapter 5.54 Tobacco, Electronic Cigarettes and Vaping to Title V of the Municipal Code as well as to amend chapter 9.24 Secondhand Smoking Regulations of Title IX of the Municipal Code.
I'll second.
So motion by Mayor Heading for staff recommendation seconded by Councilmember Addis. Any further comments? No, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson? I think everyone knows where I stand. I would like to abstain. Motion carries 401.
Thank you. That brings to number D, Council, excuse me, Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items. Any future agenda items?
I just, I wanted to bring up one. I'm not convinced, but I wanted to see what the rest of council thinks about this. We did receive a number of emails about asking council to write a letter to the governor, asking the governor to institute a rent freeze and mortgage moratorium. I'm not convinced that it's the right solution, but I did want to bring it up because we had received so many requests about it. I don't think we have anything on the books that would allow the mayor to just write that letter on his own, like we have other things where the mayor could just write his letter. And so I just wanted to bring it up as a possible future agenda item and see what other folks thought about looking at that as a possibility. And again, I'm not personally convinced that it's the right way to go, but I did want to open it up because we'd heard so many folks in the public ask us for this.
Thank you for that. Can't see you all, so any, Councilmember Davis?
I would not want to take that up for several reasons. One is that the emails I received were all cut and paste. There was no variance in the language. I did not detect any emotion or passion, any individual feelings. It just seemed like a chain email effort. And I am, I'm a firm believer that if you want the governor to do something, you ask the governor yourself. You don't ask somebody else to carry your water for you. So I don't even want to talk about it.
Councilmember McPherson?
I agree with my colleague, Mr. Davis.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes, you know, there's no question, there are large numbers of people who are suffering with inability to pay their rent or their mortgage payment, who've become immediately unemployed. And there will be more, I think, ahead of us, and it's a very serious problem. Personally, I think the governor's executive orders and the California Judicial Court orders are very strong and very protective of people who are in that position. And I encourage those people to contact their landlords immediately, contact their lenders immediately. They are protected. And I think the sooner we can get that information up on our website, as was suggested earlier, and get that word out to the community, the better off everybody is going to be. But I think we're very well protected with what's in place already.
Thank you, and boy, you know, I agree with all of those comments that you made. I too received those emails. I responded. I'll tell you how I responded to each one, that I would not support it. I saw the cut and paste issue. I tried to get beyond that. But my response was until that became an executive order that came down from the governor, that I didn't think it was a local issue that should be promulgated from the bottom up. And so basically, that was my summary. But thank you, Councilmember Addis, because I know we did receive, boy, I don't know, maybe nine or 10. I'm sure we all got them.
Yeah, we received a number. The reason I wanted to bring it up is that, you know, I did respond to folks that their point was well-taken. In my opinion, the point was well-taken that people are hurting with, in terms of their rent. People are hurting in terms of paying their mortgages. I think that's going to increase. And my commitment was, you know, just to recognize that and bring it forward. But the comments I received back on that, though, really let me know that a few of the folks are very scared right now. And so, you know, whatever we can do as a council, and like I said, I'm not convinced that that's necessarily the right solution, but I appreciate my colleagues being willing to give their thinking on this. And I know we'll continue to look at other ways to help folks in our community to get through the crisis and work with our chamber. And that I know, I believe we're hearing at the next meeting, some other things that we'll do to address the economic situation.
Indeed, and thank you for that summary. I do agree with that. And thank you for also noting that I did not consider it within my purview to write a letter, so I did not. And thanks for bringing it up tonight. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held via Zoom on Tuesday, April 28, 2020, at 5:30 PM. Thank you for being here this evening. Be safe and be well, community. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, staff.